emerged with market accounts and advisors on February first. Prior to that, it was Powers and Sullivan, and I was with Powers and Sullivan for twenty eight years. My focus was on municipal audits and government audits in school districts. So this is for a few years now. And we're happy to be here tonight. Just to get started, I want to start off by thanking the superintendent, director of finance, treasurer, rest of the finance team for all the cooperation and assistance that we received from the post of the audit. Everybody was really great about getting us all the information that we needed, answering all our questions. And we really appreciated that. A lot of what we do now, and even more so since COVID, is we try to get the information loaded up onto our secure portal. And that's, you know, something that works out well for us, and I think it's also working out well for our clients. We've all were kind of forced into it, but it really kind of makes the audit more efficient for us. The school has been great, the business office about uploading information for us prior to us coming out. So we can kind of get a head start on things, we can start looking at reports, doing planning and all that stuff, which is great. So we really appreciate that. We do the audit in a couple of different phases. We do a preliminary phase, and for Vermont Boyles did that early in April. And at that time, we're coming in, we're reviewing financial controls, we're testing transactions, we're auditing sections that we can audit, like the budget and debt and things like that. We're basically trying to get as much of a head start in the year end market as we can. And then we come back out for our year end work mid-November. And we're wrapping up any loose ends we might have from our preliminary work. We're doing all of our year end audit procedures. And then we're helping to compile the audit reports that we're talking, you talked about tonight. And I want to go over some financial highlights with you. Before I do that, I also want to just go through some required communications. And these are basically from the auditing standards that we have to follow. Probably not the most exciting thing, but I'll try to keep this slide real quick. As the auditor, we're responsible for planning and performing the audits to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects, and the quotes were generally accepted accounting principles. Management is responsible for the selection of significant accounting policies. You can find those in no one's financial statements. There were no new accounting policies that were adopted during 2023. And the application of existing policies was consistent with what it has kind of passed. So nothing unusual there. Accounting estimates are an integral part. The financial statements are based on management's knowledge and experience about past or current events, and also about assumptions about future events. The most significant estimates relate to the net pension liability, the net other post-employment benefit liability, and depreciation of fixed assets. We evaluated the key assumptions and factors that are used to develop those estimates. We found those to be reasonable in relation to the financial statements taken as a whole. Despite the difficulties being encountered while performing the audit, I'm happy to report, we're both happy to report, that we did not encounter any difficulties with dealing with management while trying to perform the audit. Audit adjustments, our professional standard define an audit adjustment as a correction, proposed correction of the financial statements that, in our judgment, would not have been detected except through our auditing procedures. And we're happy to report that we did not have to propose any such adjustments. And then the last thing relates to disagreements with management. And this relates to matters whether or not resolved to our satisfaction or related to accounting, reporting, or auditing matters that could be significant to the financial statements or the auditors report. And again, we're happy to report that no such disagreements with management occurred. So as far as the financial highlights go, first, we'd like to talk about your general fund fund balance. That can be seen on page fourteen of the financial statements. Your fund balance in total was $976,000. Of that, $247,000 was assigned. And $97,000 of that relates to occurrences. And then another $150,000 is excessive deficiency that was voted to fund the 2024 budget. That left you with $729,000 of unassigned fund balance, and that's about three percent of your budget. And that is basically the starting point for your E and D calculation. And it usually approximates your E and D. There are things that can be added and subtracted to it. If you have deficits and grants, and you didn't get the money in by September thirtieth, the five-year revenue will say no, that's going to be reduced. But you're basically starting with your unassigned fund balance in that calculation. General fund operating results, those can be found on page forty-six. And this is basically your budget, the actual results. So your budgetary operations resulted in a decrease of $20,000 in fund balance. You had actually planned for a $150,000 decrease by budgeting $150,000 of E and D upon the budget. That was offset by a revenue surplus of $405,000. And that's mainly due to your intergovernmental revenues. Intergovernmental revenue exceeded budget by $279,000. That mainly relates to transportation reimbursements and your child school reimbursements. And your investment income was also $115,000 over budget. Your actual expenditures came in at $18,000 under budget. And when you put that all together, it does have your budgetary results. But those results to us indicate that you have a sound budget process, a structurally balanced budget, and good budgetary controls. There was no overspending, and you're budgeting conservatively enough on your revenues that you have surplus there as well. You also have a school choice fund. And this is like a reserve because the money is available for expenditure by the school committee without further appropriation. At the end of the year, you have $2.4 million in the fund. And that's about twelve percent of the budget. So some of the other school districts that we audit, many of them have capital stabilization funds, or they might, their E and D closer to the max. You guys are probably, I would say, a little bit lower than a lot. But we look at, I think, a lot of the ones that we see are closer to the max, around the five percent E and D control that to have. And then tend to have like a capital stabilization fund. But you do have a higher reserve, and we're probably seeing school choice. So I think that kind of offsets and gives you some flexibility. Like, we as auditors are conservative, and we, you know, like to see reserves, and the rating agencies like to see reserves. And you're limited as to what you can have in your general fund because we're only allowed to have five percent of your next year's budget. And so school choice is a way that you can have some money set aside for unexpected things that might come up. And that gives you some flexibility, which is a good thing. Your other post-employment benefit liability, significant liability, just wanted to talk about that for a minute. The liability increased by $705,000 and totaled $16.1 million at the end of the year. That increase is mainly just due to service cost and interest. So the service cost of just additional benefits that were earned by current active employees. And your discount rate increased slightly from 3.54% to 3.65%. And that's required because you don't have that money set aside yet to where you can start having what they call a blended discount rate. Your rate is based on the 20-year AA municipal bond rate, so you have to use that because of the level of funding that you have. Once you get to a certain level, then you just stop blending that with a long-term expected rate of return. And if you compare the rate that's used for your HOPEF to the retirement system, which they consider to be funded to a point where they can use their long-term expected rate of return, they're using a seven percent rate. And as you're able to use a higher rate, it can have a really big impact on your liability. There's something called a sensitivity analysis. It's a chart within the HOPEF footnote disclosure of the financial statements. And it shows you the impact of a one percent change on the discount rate. And it's about $3 million. So if you are able to increase your discount rate by one percent, your HOPEF liability would go down by about $3 million. And that's pretty significant when your liability is sitting at $16 million. And so that's something that, you know, if you're serious about funding the liability, you might want to talk to your HOPEF actuary about it and try to find out. They can give you a good idea of what level you need to get your assets up to to start being able to increase that discount rate about the AA municipal bond rate. And that can really have a significant impact in lowering that liability. And a lot of times, it's not, you know, you guys are contributing pretty consistently, and you're building up a balance. You're just not quite near where you need to be. And so that would be good information, I think, for you to have. The HOPEF liability is about two percent funded now. That deepened up a little bit from one percent in prior years, and there's some progress there, which is good. Your pension liability, teachers and certain administrators who qualify for pension can join the mass teachers retirement system, which is great. That liability is borne by the Commonwealth, and they pay what they consider to be on behalf benefits. They pay on behalf of the district to fund those benefits. The liability associated with those individuals is about $30 million. And the current year on behalf payments by the Commonwealth, they paid $2.5 million on behalf of Vermont Boyles. And for all other employees that don't qualify, the mass teachers, they're in the Worcester Regional Retirement System. That liability for Vermont Boyles increased by $774,000 during the year and totaled $4.4 million at the end of the year. So that's significantly variable, the liabilities for HOPEF. Middlesex is about 48% funded as of 12/31/22. And as I mentioned, they're using a fully funded discount rate of 7.25%. Some might consider that to be on the high side, but it's been approved by paring the public agency that obviously is the action real reports and authorize of those rates. You didn't issue any new debt during the year, long-term debt. You've got $12.1 million outstanding, and you paid down $999,000 of principal payments. And you got no short-term debt outstanding. So just to summarize all of that, we're able to issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's the best we can get, meaning financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects. The quotes are generally accepted accounting principles. All recording deadlines were met. The information that we received was accurate. We didn't note any internal control deficiencies that would rise to the level of a significant deficiency or material weakness. And as I mentioned, all of our interactions were professional and courteous, which we always appreciate. And then just a couple of other quick things. We also audit your federal awards. And there's a separate report that's issued on that, a single-odd report. And that's required for any entities who are spending over $750,000 in a fiscal year. The district expended $1.1 million, so you weren't over that much, but you got up to that level. $245,000 of that was for the child nutrition program. $188,000 was for special education. $298,000 was related to ESER grants. And another $95,000 for other grants. The special education cluster was considered a major program, so that's where I'm testing focused around. And we didn't have any findings, question costs, or any internal control deficiencies. So again, that was another clean report, best result you could get as far as that goes. And then the last report is the management letter. We always like to say that this is critical in nature, doesn't highlight the things that you do well. But it's important to know that there's no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies reported in here. There is one comment in here related to completing a fraud risk assessment. This is a comment that we put in every one of our client's management letters at some point in time, especially after all the big financial issues happened, probably ten or fifteen years ago. And basically what it's saying is that you should have a whole process, and you should do an initial fraud risk assessment, and then you should have an ongoing process where you probably look at like another area each year, and you just keep checking from year to year with the initial one. With some of our clients, I'd say probably more than half have had like another company come in and do the initial one just because of resources. There's been some that have decided to do it themselves. But it's basically getting together with a group of people that have knowledge about the finances and the operations and trying to understand where the risks are of fraud with the assets and also with money. And then after you've identified those areas, then determining, okay, what controls do we have in place? And then making an assessment, do we think that these controls are sufficient? Or should we have additional controls? And then, you know, you're looking at things like cost benefit. You don't want the cost of your controls to outweigh the benefits that they're providing. And then coming to a consensus that, okay, now we're comfortable, you know, we know where the risks are, we know what controls are in place, we're happy with those controls. Get all of that documented, and then present it to the school committee to sign off, and everybody be on the same page that, you know, there's a comfort level with the way these different risks are being addressed. And so that's really what that comment is. And then each year, you would try to incorporate, like going out and visiting one of the areas that you had identified and kind of updating it, making sure that people are following the processes and procedures that are in place. Because just because you've documented what the process and procedure should be, doesn't mean that someone's necessarily doing what they should be, and so you just want to test that. And that was everything. So if anybody has any questions, be happy to take it.
I just have one question, unless anyone else does.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mike.
You mentioned internal controls, and I noticed last year's letter, so June 2022, there was a comment in the letter about, you don't express opinion on the effectiveness of the internal controls, but you did notice opportunities where we could strengthen them. Do you then follow up this year and review that and check out anything that did happen? Because I noticed there was no mention of that in this year's letter.
Maybe from the actual, like, opinion that's upfront in the report.
Yeah.
So that was referring to the comment that I just talked about. And so we did follow up on it. There wasn't a lot to follow up on because...
So specifically what you noticed in 2022 was taken care of in 2023?
So we followed up on it to see if anything had been done, and it hasn't been addressed yet. So I don't know if there was any formal plans yet, but I think it's something that the district is looking into.
Thanks.
So when you were talking about doing the fraud risk assessment, and you mentioned that you work with a group of people, a group of folks that knew the finances to go through all the different assets and all the different areas. You're talking about you would come in and work with the employees of the district to go over their process?
Yeah, I mean, as Powers and Sullivan, we never did that, just because we felt like there could be some independence issues there.
Gotcha. So it would have to be, but now that you're at the larger firm, you could see...
I could run it up and see if, you know, the independence department and see if they, you know, think that that is something that would be okay. And if it is, they have a lot of resources that could do that type of work. But I would just need to confirm, you know, that there's no independence issues there, like for their department.
But it would not be you guys?
No, it would probably be a different group.
A different team? Gotcha. And but you'd be working with employees of the district to identify different areas and develop processes for internal controls, which pretty much ties into what Mike was asking.
I did reach out to a company you gave me in the...
Oh, Eric Kuncher?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So we've been kind of coordinating to set something up.
All right, great.
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. Does anyone have any other questions? Thank you so much.
Okay.
Really, really appreciate you guys coming out tonight.
Thanks, everybody else.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. All right, next, I am wondering if the principals would mind going so we can talk about the AIMS Web and your reports. So why don't we do Cindy, would you like to go first?
Sure.
Oh, thank you so much.
First of all, thank you for allowing me to share some of the amazing things that are happening at EES. And the second thing I want to talk about is I feel like I'm going back to first grade. In first grade, I had to go speech services because I couldn't say my S's correctly. So a long story, very short, I paid for three sets of races for my children, and it's my turn. So I have very new sets of invisible right now, so if I say my S is wrong, it's only because of the air with me. I just want to highlight on a couple of positive things that are, that are happening at EES. The first thing we discussed before about clubs and getting clubs in there for younger kids. We're still working on that. But I just want to draw attention to some of the things the staff are doing. We have things going on during their lunchtime. They're bringing kids in for a reading, I want to call it a club because it's during the day, it's during their lunch recess. They go in and work with third-grade teacher, Mrs. Reed. And there was firstly, there was three kids getting up to recess for that. Not because I didn't want to go out and play on the snow, but because they wanted to read the storybook there. A fourth-grade teacher, Mrs. Laduke, is doing a math, math fun is what I want to call it, with our math coach, Joey F., Joey Thorny. And there's kids in there. They started out really strong, they started to pull back from math, which kind of breaks my heart because math is my favorite subject. But we're working on those things. We do have some clubs that are funded, but we also have some teachers stepping up. We have a craft fund, again, it's after-school teacher volunteer time, they need one to two times a month. We do have some work to get to here for this, and we're working on that as well. But as a goal of mine is to get them in a group of younger kids and also offer some more opportunities for the kids. I'm worried we'll draw on that because I'm going to borrow his idea at his school. Two other things, two students that attended EES, one still does, one has since moved. I received an alimony from Desi, signifying something really good improvement in their forecast scores. So we are having a celebration. One of the children moved, we forwarded his information to him. But the other one is now a fourth-grade student, and we are going to do a celebratory luncheon for this child next Tuesday. Invited her family in, invited Superintendent Costello and any teacher or team member that's worked with this child, because we know it's a team effort, to celebrate this with her. So that's happening. And then we did the AIMS Web. Now, I want to talk about AIMS Web just briefly because it's, it's an indicator of how we inform our instruction. We have some good news, and we have some things we need to work on. But I just want to address two things that we did as a team. So I met with the grade-level teams, and we talked about positives. It's always important to talk about those positives, there's always positive in those scores. And then we talked about, okay, where do we need to do some work? And I want to bring up two things before I open it up to questions, because I knew you have our report. The fifth-grade team, in combination with the AIMS Web and other in-class assessments, discovered that vocabulary was a lacking skill across the board. And they have come up with strategies to really work on this vocabulary every single day. We might even bring it to the school level and do some fun things, stay tuned for that, it's in progress. But they aren't working on their vocabulary, and the teachers discovered that. So that AIMS Web and other assessments kind of drove them to that. The other thing is kindergarten. Looking at our kindergarten scores, we want to improve them. So we talked about what we can do. Right now, the tutoring, there's more groups of kindergartners getting that tutoring. The groups have expanded, and some children have leveled out in there, they're not getting those services anymore, but others might be. So those are some things that as a grade level, we came up with. The teachers, kindergarten teachers are progress monitoring these kids. We want to see those growth, the growth that they can exhibit and what we can teach them. So those are some positive highlights. Yeah, do you have any questions?
What's the vocabulary issue?
So in through their assessments, they realized the kids, the vocabulary, they didn't know some cat, or reading, or if they're, they're talking about science and social studies, the vocabulary was low. Kids didn't know the meaning, so they really put an effort into teaching them about vocabulary daily. So they're doing things during the morning meeting, they're doing things during reading. They're incorporating with science and social studies as well, so...
Was that a particular grade, or is it just all across?
Fifth grade was that. I think grade level list of you things they do work on. But those are the two that I really wanted to mention. I'm very proud of what their plans are coming and going forward.
Do you think the kinder, I noticed the kindergarten scores might be an area for improvement. Do you think the large class sizes, this is the largest class size we've seen at BES in kindergarten, do you think that has something to do with the lower scores that we're seeing in kindergarten this year?
There's a couple of things with that. I do think the large class sizes impact at any level. I would love to see, and I know we've talked about that in other meetings, having three across and not switching back and forth.
Yeah.
So when you think about our kindergarten teachers, I have one that's been there for many years, my other two are somewhat new. They moved across grade levels because of class size. We all know that if you teach one subject or one grade, the longer you do it, the better you get at it. There's been some movement there at BES as well. But the other thing we noticed is when you do the fall benchmark, they might ask for two sounds, letter sounds. You go to winter, it raises. I don't know exactly what it is, maybe you do, but I think it's around 25 letter sounds they have to know in that time. And it's a huge challenge on that benchmark. Am I right in terms of that?
Cindy, I'm looking at the report you have out there for the AIMS Web, and I'm just trying to understand the vocabulary comment for fifth grade. Because I look at this, and I see like the fifth grade scores are the highest of all the grades.
They're your grade.
Yeah, like I've been considering both the third graders at 65, then the fifth grade at 82.
So I only showed the two different grade levels of doing that, just to show you that, yes, we're celebrating those successes of the fifth grade. But what can we still work on? There's always something to work on. Third grade is too, they're working on that, and their groups have changed as well. I just, I knew I had five, and so I didn't want to talk about every grade level I can.
Yeah, well, no, that's, that's fine, that was one of my questions is...
They all, they all have some really good things they're working on. And how we meet is grade level, they have time frame where they do some cross-planning, and I join those meetings. We talk about what is the positive things, basically, okay, what do we need to work on?
All right.
Did I say what I meant?
And you did, you did great. We're doing good, we're doing good so far. Anyone else? I, I mean, in general, looking at both elementary AIMS Web's, we can do better, right?
We can always do better.
Yeah.
But it's, it's an indicator of what we need to teach. What are we doing well with, where do we need to work on? Those are the things that try to stretch.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the part that ties into the budget.
Exactly. I mean, there's definitely glaring, looking at some, there's definitely glaring areas. There were certain things that were just, like, that kindergarten, the kindergarten scores absolutely jumped out at me. Third grade, I have a child in third grade at BES, so I feel that struggle. But yeah, I, it's good to hear the progress and that there are little things that everyone is working on to move this forward.
The one thing I want to bring forward is, and I see it with my staff, my team, the passion. They want these kids to do better, and they want to bring them forward. And I'll just give you a quick example, because I know we're on a time constraint. I had a meeting today, it was just this meeting in IST to talk about a teacher's individual struggles with particular students. And this child on the AIMS Web looks great, green, T L scores, that's the highest. But she dipped, and this teacher brought this child to an IST meeting to talk about what else can I do? I'm concerned about this child dropping. She's in the green, she's still up there, but she saw the drop. That's the kind of teachers that we have at Vermont Boyles. I mean, I like to talk about Boyles, and then you'll talk about, but it's a passion. We're going to get them there.
Don't worry about the time, Cindy, but I don't...
Go ahead. I'm not just use one of my... Go ahead, go ahead, no, this is important, this is important.
Parents and taxpayers want to know what they're getting here. So just a note on the reports, we see these reports all the time, we send the reports. Like Megan asked earlier, is there a way to see growth, not just the, I know you have the charts for growth for that particular year, for that particular class. Is there, do you track growth for each class as they move through? Like kindergarten, now this year they're first, now that next year they're second. Do you have that data to show how they're growing year to year? Because this is growth from fall to winter.
Right.
But like, how are this year's third graders doing compared to how they did in second grade?
We can sort of look at that, I didn't...
That's a great point.
Like, can we get that just going forward in the reports? Can we get information like that?
Because there could be a class of kid, you know, at some point, the learning falls on the teacher, but at some point, some, not every kid is going to be an academic whiz, right? Some kids are not great test takers, some, you know, and especially in some of these, these schools where the class sizes are so small. I think it, it makes a difference. You could just have a group of kids that, you know, more kids in that group. That third grade at BES, teeny tiny, there's only 38 kids. So there could be five kids that just really, really struggle, and that percentage is so much higher because the class is small. And to Mike's point, if you track it year over year...
I'm sure you have that data.
Sure, yeah, it's just, yeah, to present that for the next time. I, I agree, I think that's a good point. Yeah, for next time, definitely not something for now. So for the, for the spring, we look at it for the year picture. I think that's a great idea if you could, if we can incorporate that for spring, AIMS Web. All right, I guess not too much. All right, awesome, thank you, John. You ready?
Nice to vote, we decided to stay receipts.
All right, it's fine. Of course, Cindy. That's totally fine.
John, there's no hazing left. There's no hazing left at school, is any?
Trouble maker.
It's not right.
All right.
Very quickly, my report, you've read it. I'll just have a couple of things. We did NATE testing again this year, for those of you that have been around a lot. NATE, which is the nation's report card assessment. This is the second time we've been chosen in the last five years. The department that's still like competing for a level one at school. We never had any results, but it's a nice experience for the kids. It's a way to kind of let teachers know, you know, how other things work. We've been working in a major classroom, fundraising for FSCon very well. Very committed group of parents again this year, they're trying to live up, live up to Mrs. Lee's. So far, so good, but it means don't want us for some of those next. And AIMS Web, you know what? Yay. And AIMS Web, you don't want, yay! You know, there are a couple of questions, yeah, but really solid scores, really solid growth. Questions?
The only question I had is on your fifth grade. Every other grade grew, but that one dropped in math. What happened? Is it more vocabulary?
It's not vocabulary. It's a little bit, but we just go, so that I can answer your question more specifically. Okay, I know there is not the issue. Sometimes it's the way, it's just how AIMS Bob. I think my concern, you guys, I've heard we talk a lot about literacy, every third grader reading every level blah blah blah. We come along the way with literacy. Our math metrics are the next area for us to tackle because our math metrics, elementary look are somewhat, and that's an area, this is why AIMS Web is so helpful, because it will identify for you broadly where our kids are struggling. And it will give you the tools to kind of track interventions. You know, it's not like a grade because especially with math, when you do the math assessment, it's kind of broad based, a little bit of everything. So some stuff the kids have already had, some stuff the kids haven't had yet. But because it's compared to a national sample, that's why we keep shooting 60%. If you get above the 60th percentile top as a grade, we know things are going pretty well. Because that's exceeding the majority of students in this national sample, which we should be able to do. We're excellent school district. And so that's always our goal. I can see those little fluctuations from time to time. Because seeing the third grade as we kind of move along, that graph that you're looking for, there are my third graders, they can be struggles.
Yeah, that's speaking of your 60th percentile, that one, there's what, 30% aren't?
Yeah.
Does that mean that nationally some schools are teaching the things and when you said they just haven't been taught it yet? Why would we have to test?
So they teach, there is depending on your math program, I think there'd be on philosophy, certain things are taught at different times. Like I know in third grade, in divisions, the math program we use, they do two units on addition and subtraction, like large, you know, more work probably, but it's way off in like the eighth and ninth units. And teachers got together and they decided, well, they're familiar with addition and subtraction, let's do that first and get them going. So we do, excuse me, some stuff on order based on kind of teacher experience. It's that kind of stuff you want teachers to learn. So yeah, it's a little bit different, you know, fractions come, like we do fractions basically right before I have test testing because it's gonna be out there. But if they're asked about fractions in December or January, they're not gonna have as strong of an intervention.
John, I get it really. Just with the budget talks and what we need to be a mess and what we can ask, what we're asking for math teachers at high school. You're talking about 60th percentile nationwide, but even like a lot of these scores, in one class, 50% of them aren't even there. So I always look at that side of it, you know. What do you need to get that, what do you need from us to get to that side? That's why we're here. What do we need to put through to get more than one out of every two kids up to the basic, basic level? 60th percentile, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't mean to interrupt you. I look at 60th percentile of anything. If I had 60th percentile at work, I'd be fired, I'd be failed. Like I know Cindy, you mentioned earlier in this year, you and John disagree on performance numbers. I don't know that it was necessarily talking about this one or not, but every year, it's 60th percentile is success, where a lot of people here, 60th percentile is not success. So just, because I'm dumb, explain to me why 60th percent is a celebration?
60th percent is not.
Percentile, yeah, percentile.
Percentile is really different. So if I had my jury kid here, he would do a much better job explaining this. At the 50th percentile, half of the group is below that, right? When you get to the 60th percentile, almost 80% of the kids are below that. When we talk about grade level percentile, not individual kids, but grade level percentile, that's all the group. So it's all the kids that score the 99th, 95th, and there's a ton of those. But I've got kids who for a variety of reasons, some of them, you know, students who are down, are not prepared for, are not capable of third grade math, fourth grade math, fifth grade math, because of their academic needs, who are receiving services through special education, they're not gonna score well on this test. They shouldn't be expected to score well. What they should be, what we expect is that they'll keep growing and getting better. We're watching for nobody lag, nobody backslides. But anyhow, I've got kids in that group in my school, they're about the 1st percentile. We test everybody, almost everybody. And we test them because we need to be able to show this channel still needs help. Because we, you know, the upside is, we've had kids in third grade who scored the 5th percentile who are now scoring the 43th percentile because we've got really good special education tutors and we do a wonderful job. So when I talk about the group guy in the 60th percentile, that's a big, that's a big leap. It's not like a grade.
So you're saying 80% of kids score in the 60th percentile?
80% of kids fall below the 60th percentile. Think of that, remember?
80%, oh, and that made, that made it, that...
So that's...
Okay, all right, so it's a bell curve.
It's a bell curve.
Yeah, 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 all right, I get it.
So like what Megan was asking earlier, what you just mentioned about how a lot of kids are in the 90s and 80s. I guess how, where do they fall? Not that I'm asking for individual students' performance or anything, but I mean, half the kindergarten isn't there. So what is half of 80% of the nation? I don't know what that is, but... It's scoring at 52% is at or above the 60th percentile for kindergarten, so 48. All right. On the numeracy, the math?
On the math?
Yeah.
So that's kindergarten and first grade, right?
This one says early numeracy kindergarten at or above 60th and it lists it at 52. And the fall is 45, so there's a lot of growth there.
Right.
But it's still a 52.
So we're looking at different reports?
I'm looking at your PMS mid-year data 24 final. It's, what is it, it's page, page eight.
It's in the drive.
Oh, you're waiting for the bottom, I'm sorry.
Yeah, page eight, nine on the document maybe.
So you get to say, so now to go back to your kindergarten question. So 52% are above the 60th percentile. And we'd like that number to be higher. And you look across, yes, their growth percentile, right, they're 78.
Yeah, that's clear from all...
Even though they are a struggling group now, yeah, struggling is probably be a strong word. That group is growing at a very accelerated rate. 50% in that number, that growth number, 50% is a typical growth. So if it's a 78% top for growth, is a real accomplishment. This is also, without getting too deep into the weeds, a group where we have some pretty, some children with some pretty significant deficits, who take the test primarily because we need to show they still need services, but whom we do not expect to test well.
I mean, I take it as what we talked about in the policy meeting about needing more help in the classrooms. And what could we get for you?
Don't misunderstand me, I will always take one. But, and you asked me before, what do I need, which is terrible to state, because I'm gonna tell you. And I'm way over my five minutes too. You were supposed to keep track of us. You've got, especially in Berlin, very good sized classes, by much. You've got, and we'll always speak for Berlin, really veteran teachers, really skilled professionals. But what we don't have necessarily are people who aren't up to date in terms of how do we move more kids forward more effectively. Joey from Illinois is forever going on the math side about things that we could be doing, more project based types of things. Our kids get a real hands-on field for mathematics. He will tell you, people who say, oh, I'm not good at math, his response is invariably, you must have had bad math teacher. Because nobody ever brags about being bad at reading. But everybody's comfortable saying they're bad. What I need is more time for teachers to work together. So when we do that first read on the calendar, that's what I'm shooting.
I feel my thunder. Just to say, we're settling into that.
I mean, I can lead a horse to water, man.
That's, all right. All right, this is good, this is good. No, this is important stuff and so thank you. All right. We're gonna move on to Lisa.
Okay, so...
Thank you, John.
So thank you for reviewing my report. There's a lot to celebrate at Tohonto and I am going to just highlight two items for this evening. We received the results from our school climate surveys from both families and the students and our AIMS Web testing. So those are the two things that I would like to speak on. But the school climate survey, this was a wonderful opportunity first for teachers to work together to create the climate survey. So a group of teachers came together during professional design to create that survey and then we sent that after reviewing it, we sent that out late January. And then recently, we shared it among the admin team and we just shared it with the department chair meeting on Monday and the team leader meeting. Today, we're sharing that information. Surveys take a long time to digest, so we're giving them the time and space and we're going to come back and look at that. But I gave all of you a snapshot of the multiple choice items. There was an opportunity for families and students to provide more in-depth information if they wanted to. We did get over 100 respondents in the families and for the students, which for me was a really good response to a survey. We've got not as many, you know, open responses. But the good news to share and you can ask questions, I think we were all very pleased with the results that students feel safe at Tohonto, students feel welcome at Tohonto. What they were looking for, families were looking for possibly more hands-on opportunities and more opportunities to partner particularly at the younger grades, the middle school grade levels, to understand progress monitoring with, you know, throughout those grades. And I think students and their parents also wanted, and this, these are the types of things we're like, okay, so what can we do? It really provides opportunity for us to have conversation. Is they were saying, well, we would like our good behaviors to be highlighted more, which is interesting because we are continuing this, you know, the Starbucks and really highlighting that and promoting that. So then the question, so we've implemented these things, but there must be a disconnect. So where is that disconnect? And that's where the conversation leads. So, you know, is it, so then maybe going out and asking students, maybe at student advisory or at student council or at another opportunities, you know, how would you feel recognized? So continuing that conversation, so really providing a foundation for future conversations and looking at ways we can continue to make sure that families feel connected and students feel supported and welcomed and ways that we can do better. And the AIMS Web testing, what has been, looking at data has been a focus for the middle school. And I know Renee and Sally have met with each of the grade, the team level grades to look at how they're using the data and what the data means. And also not just AIMS Web, but IXL and classroom data and how it all comes together to inform instruction. And we also, I know recently also, looking at the AIMS Web and thinking that there's gotta be more opportunity in this very rich format to pull different reports. So Sally, Renee and Joey from Illinois, they all came together and looked at a variety of reports that could be accessed, that is gonna provide us greater, more diverse set of data to be able to inform instruction. So we're using the AIMS Web information to, you know, help, you know, kind of look at things. We're looking at scheduling. We know that our sixth grade sorority scores are very, very strong. We have like, you know, over 80% in both math and English, meaning, you know, above the target of the 60th percentile. But we see that we have an intervention block in sixth grade, the class block, that doesn't exist in seventh and eighth grade. So looking at scheduling and how that may impact scores and how we can, you know, move forward in a more effective way. So we had, you know, growth and significant growth in sixth and seventh grade, you know, pretty level scores in eighth grade. And again, you know, eighth grade does not have that intervention block. And so really taking the opportunity to, you know, sit together and use both the climate survey and AIMS Web testing data to really have some meaningful conversations about what we're doing.
Can Lisa explain STAG?
Well, anything, or STAG?
STAG?
STAG, the class block.
Class, explain. There's... Oh, there is, yeah, so in eighth, in eighth grade, they do have a STAG block. It's not every day. And they, it has been really helpful, they're doing more like study skill. The students that aren't in math lab or ELA lab, they'll be in kind of this STAG block almost like every third day. It's not as consistent as like an intervention time, but they are doing more proactive things, like I said, you know, study skills, note taking, you know, executive functioning work. But it's not strategic intervention. It means that, because I mean, right, yeah, it's more of like this whole class needs before they get to high school, these skills. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Which has also been great. And I think the middle school teachers, you know, looking at this data and really knowing what the kids need, really, I think it reached out, the scheduling committee saying, we need some more time. We need time with these kids before they get to high school to kind of close some of these gaps. And again, it's about the growth, right? And so for kids, and it's not unusual to be honest, to be flatter in the winter, you know, and that's why...
Especially at the grade.
Yeah. But, but you know, it's important to look at, you know, and unfortunately, middle school students, no matter how much you tell them, this is really important, you take this seriously, it's not always terribly important to us. But of course.
Can I add something on to this? And Renee, and Mike, you're bringing this up and I wanna make a point about, to the point about the budget, right, budget and bringing in the second assistant principal last year has made...
Massive.
Massive shifts at Tohonto. Hearing the work that they're doing in ways that they have not been able to get to in the past, the fact that Renee is on board, going, focusing mainly on the middle school students, right, and making these kinds of changes there. Rich is working up and primarily the high school and Lisa's overseeing all of that and getting into the classrooms more. And I'll talk about, that's the walkthrough pieces, right, for my goals. Remarkable changes and they are a team. I walk in and I, they're always working on something, always, always in sync with one another, looking at ways to improve instruction in ways we couldn't get to before. The other piece of it is, and I say, Sally is over there every week with, because separating that position and giving John with elementary, right, he knows the math and talking about AIMS Web, because this is his field. And Sally, knowing sixth through 12th grade and being able to just focus on that, that's how she finally, I tried for several years, right, to get the, you're gonna hear about the internship program off the ground, but she can be there because that's, those are among her things that she really focuses on. So the dynamics of that have made a tremendous difference. So to your point about... So to your point about adding that position, I just wanted to make sure I made it to that.
Absolutely.
Huge, huge shifts.
And I echo that because, you know, and Sally and I discussed this, it is, it is a tremendous difference. We were so incredibly grateful. We're so incredibly grateful to have that position, to be able to have that team. The teachers feel it, the students feel it. And it, I can't, like, there is, there are no words to express the gratitude that I feel personally, but I know that I get emails and, you know, we get, you know, staff coming up to us. They feel the difference. And the students feel the difference. And the students know, like, this, you know, we're, we're just able to do, you know, Carol said, we're just able to do so much more. I, I, I can't believe that Sally and, and they survived, honestly. I really can't. And, and the way they were able to... You know, the way they were able to do what they did.
Yeah.
So we are incredibly grateful and, and, you know, we are, we're grateful to have Sally be a part of, you know, these conversations, you know, and it's just, it's wonderful. And that's why, so Laura, when you said, you know, how, I'm like, great. I'm, I'm great. I really am. Like, I feel great and I feel Tejantown is in a great position. That's my word.
It sounds like this stride is just, I'm really excited about upcoming years. I feel like we've got an amazing administrative team in place, so thank you all. This was awesome. Alright, and...
Do you mind if I ask a couple?
Oh, yeah, you have a question? Yeah, go ahead.
Not that I want to overlook all the positives. I agree with you. I think the two assistant principals, if we hadn't got that last year, that would have been trouble.
Yep.
Two things. One's just kind of, what's up with bathroom maintenance in this district? You mentioned that in your report here. We saw it at BES earlier this year.
So, I, you know, it's, it's a, I don't know, like, I think sometimes, so there's a couple things, I think, but one of the things is that sometimes students don't clean it after themselves. And sometimes we might...
You don't say?
...and then, and so if, if you have a middle school or a high school child living near home, you might notice that those bathrooms are particularly disgusting. You know, there are all kinds of things happen that go wrong.
Yeah.
So there's that. And then, and then we've also had, and Dan can speak more eloquently of this, we've had staffing issues. We, you know, it's hard to get, it's hard to get custodians. We have had gaps, we have studios down, you know, there's certain maintenance, maintenance things that have to come before. And then, but when the shift ends, whatever's not done, it's not done and then it ends up being that. So it's just, it's been one of those years that I think we've, we've struggled to make sure, you know, ours are that. And then, you know, got the, there'd be snow and there's the snow, it will pass to happen. But yeah, I, I know and taking care of that. I know how to fix the overflowing urinal, the little thing I have to do.
Yes, of course, kids are disgusting. My own two are definitely disgusting. Yes, absolutely. Like, this room right here, I mean, the sinks are broken, the water doesn't work. That's not kids being gross. Maybe it's kids being too hard on or something, but... So what's the issue with staffing? Why, why, why can't we have staffing? Is it just same old?
Tony had an issue with staffing.
Right.
Now we have a story that I was caught on injury. We filled the gap and now we're fine.
Okay.
So I thank you for bringing up that sink. I didn't know it was broken. So I would have, I would have addressed.
Alright.
And it's something, also I think that, you know, just as Tina said, like, I didn't know about that. We, you know, we use staff bathrooms. I do go through and do, you know, we do suite bathrooms, but we don't necessarily use each of them.
Yeah, I just felt since you, you mentioned it in your report, that it's a serious thing that needs to happen.
I'm sorry, I'm waiting, Mike, for a sec. Can we go back to the urinal? So are you gonna, are you gonna be able to fix that? Oh, yeah, no, there's this, this little toggle, the sign that it, it doesn't flood, but it just, it runs and it's a little toggle.
Yeah, so it gets stuck in the vacuum?
Right.
So, so there's a black one here, there's a gray one. So then once, you can bring it.
Can we get like a plumber in and fix it, or is that...
I'll probably sweat a boom or...
You are, you are fixing them?
No, no, I have a plumber.
Oh, you've got a plumber, alright.
I have a plumber.
Oh, I gotcha. Okay. But I got it. And I, I think the bottom line is that, you know, especially for middle school students, they just like to spend a lot of time in there. And so whether, you know, like, and this was part of that student survey, right? So like, I think, you know, they would spend a lot of time in there sometimes. It's either gross or they can't help it, but yeah.
You're going, okay.
Of course, they spend a lot of time in there. Alright, but Mike...
I, I do have a more serious, so talking about performance in the grades and all that and previous conversations with teachers about MCAS and how, how many students, I know we're talking about them later, the test is, they've told us in the last meeting that they designed them for the kids to fail. We've had conversations about curriculum needing to look like the students. We've had other issues with people assigning various levels of privilege. You have a line in here on the report that a majority of students feel that, yeah, so a significant number of students did not feel as though teachers noticed when they were struggling academically. How does all that, that tie, because I'm told just because the scores don't look great, that the kids are doing fine. But here we have your report specifically saying that students don't feel like they're being noticed when they're struggling academically.
And which is interesting because there was, and like, that was to know. So I put that in there because, like, if you look at the, you know, snapshots of each of the things, so significant. So if you actually look at the report, you can see that all of the, you know, snapshots, there's, there's really no significant gaps. But if there was a significant gap, that would, but just prior, the snapshot, the question prior said, do they, do they feel successful? So like, something ridiculous like, like 85% of all students that had the survey felt like they were successful. And then, then you look at that, they didn't feel like the teacher noticed if they were, so if they were struggling with something specific, but yet they feel successful. So there's, there's like two different things about how they are feeling about two different things. And so that would be one of those things that have to be like, want, you know, to, do they raise their hand? Do they not feel comfortable advocating for themselves? Like, you know, what, what is the cause of them not feeling that disconnect? Because they just answered, because when you, if you look at the sequence of the survey, they feel good, they feel like they're successful, they feel like they're challenged. It's like 85% for each of those strongly agree and agree. And then, do you feel like, you know, you're, and then it's like, you know, that's the lowest wanted maybe is like 60% agree. And it's like, okay, so how do they answer these and then answer that? So that's part of looking at a survey. It's not, it's not just taking, like, yeah, but is asking yourself, okay, so what would that mean? Why, why would students feel these, answer it this way, but then feel as though they they would notice, is it because they feel comfortable asking? We don't know. So that's, that's where it's providing rich conversation and that's what we're going to be looking at next time. So I think that's an excellent, an excellent question. I, you know, it's, I don't know if you've read it sequentially, but some of them are like, how could they have answered it this way and then answered it then, you know, said that itself?
So, some of it is, is what we talked about. Some of it is just kids don't know to ask or they want things handed to them and this is a life lesson that they need to learn that after school, it's not going to be handed for them. They gotta step up and ask.
Right. Or, you know, or maybe, or maybe they don't want to stay after school and they just want the teachers to somehow magically, you didn't mean, I don't, I don't know, but you're right.
Because I, because I would think, so this came, the survey came about through your professional development, right? Is that, yeah, so I know from talking to Carol, I mean, part of teachers training, a big part of it is recognizing the kids that need the help.
Right.
And, but our kids aren't feeling that. So if you, when you do have those conversations, if you can update us, that'd be, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Sally.
So you see my report, it focuses on this Monday.
Oh, sorry, I missed Janelle. Sally, you go and then Janelle. That's okay. Go ahead. Sorry, Janelle.
My report focuses on a job shadow internship program that I've been working on developing this year in collaboration with Eileen Rodman, who is our grade 11, 12 school counselor. She was going to be here today, but she had conflict with her children, so she's not here. But I do have Kim Rosette here, who looked over the whole program and, you know, if you have any questions about it, we can both ask any of them. So we thought that it was important to let our high school students have opportunities to explore various occupational environments so that they can use that information with their decisions about what they'd want to do after graduation. And we already had in place the ability to go visit colleges three times a year with excuse absence during junior year. So we wanted to open up for that a job shadow program as well. So through this program, she's going to meet with Eileen Rodman and she's going to discuss this with all students when she leaves with them in the spring, if this is something that's going to be in the spring. And they would then have to make a, accept a meeting with her, at which point they would get all the paperwork that they need, so to report. We have an, we have an application, we have a consent form that these, these high, like, parents. After they fill out the application, I will take a look at it and get in touch with who the person who supervises the student at the job shadow experience and set a meeting with them so that I can talk with them, that the, the location also, you know, asks for them to go out for it for us. Once all that is taken place, I would meet with the student and they would then go ahead and, you know, have a job, go ahead and do the job shadow. After they're in the job shadow, they by reflection will sign up as supervisor, they bring them back to the school and have these, these absences for that. So again, there's up to three at three different places. They, they like, it's not required, but for both their juniors and senior year. Then for senior year, we were going to offer an internship program so that they could actually work in some of those environments, so that if they, you know, have something that they're interested in, they can forward. So again, if that's something they're interested in, they would want to meet with Eileen. There's also, you know, various paperwork that they would have to fill out. Again, application, consent form. I would, you know, look over the applications, again, go to the site. We also put together a contact list that we've been working on. So the students that are interested in doing a job shadow or an internship, if they're not really sure who to contact or where to go to, we were able to develop a spreadsheet that has our different municipal departments from both early ones and another community, plus local agencies and businesses. They can also come to us with an idea of their own as well. I would always go and check it out and, and again, that's everything we have recorded. If everything goes well with that, I would meet with that student and let them know that, you know, I can act as a liaison for them. So if there was ever anything I'm concerned and all for them, I could help them resolve that. And they would schedule with Eileen a direct study into their schedule because we have a rotating schedule, so every so many days, that would allow them to leave at 1:30, which they already can do for senior privileges anyway. If they meet all the requirements. And there's some requirements for this too, as you saw in my report. So the idea is that they would work 35 hours throughout the year, at least 35, and that that would earn them 2.5 credits as some experience. So weekly, they would have reflection teams, and then at the end of the internship, they would prepare a summarizing presentation that they will give to me, myself and Eileen. And, you know, again, if, if it was something to where, let's say, students like three weeks into it, they realize, you know, this is not, you know, it's not fit or whatever, they can come to me and they can, you know, kind of start over, you know, finish the rest and say, well, so the whole idea is to see like, do you like or not, right? So you don't want maybe something stupid that they're, we don't have to have in there. We're also having a career fair. We had one last year and we're going to have another one this year. We'd love to have you present if you'd like to come. It's on April 4th from 8:30 to 10:30 in our, I mean, Janayum. And we have invited all the contacts on our contact list, plus people that came last year. And we're still looking for some people, certainly, if anybody knows anybody who can contact me and even write an email, we're building an list of people that we'd like to have some work. At the end of my report, you can see some information that I would be sharing with the supervisors of these experiences that just, you know, the do's and don'ts about what students can do at their age and what they can do, how many hours they can work, you know, how late they can work for the day, those kinds of things. So all that information is shared with supervisors, right, and I'm starting. So this is, you know, because it's new, it's kind of a, you know, it's a new developing thing. I've spoken to some other, many districts actually, that have successful programs and they definitely talk about how sometimes they got to three years to really evolve and develop, but, you know, I think this is...
Great, great. I have two questions. I saw there were the, there was a three excuse absences to go to the colleges. Did these three, three excuse absences, did they take from that or are they allowed six? Are they allowed three total?
So they can have up to three at three different places currently here.
Okay, so, so this could, so if they don't go to colleges, they could use this?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the other thing is, is it pass fail? Is someone grading this or how does it, or is it just...
So if they complete all the requirements, which are the reflections and they do the, they summarize, they have a presentation at the end, they'll, they'll pass.
Okay, thank you. For the job there, are you having trouble getting any particular area?
Um, you know, that's a good question. I've always been collecting that. I didn't actually ask her. I, I know that she, she had some other variety, but of course we'd like more. I know last year we did, we did have some interview with her, so it would be nice if we could get some, some of the interviews. Yeah, so if you know any of the decisions, send it to me. Send your room for people.
How many students do you expect to participate in the job shadow?
That's a great question. I'm not exactly sure. I mean, I will have to see, you know, because it's so new. I'm hoping lots of them, you know, because it's, I think it's a great opportunity. I also, by the way, included in the report, the descriptions for the program studies should be due, so I put that in there so that...
I agree with you. I think it is a great job. We already talked about the New York field trip, sort of combining it somehow. But here it says for the juniors, right, they can drive to the, they can drive themselves to the job shadow location?
Yeah, well, it'd be outside of the day, so they'd be going from home.
It'd be outside of the day?
Right.
Alright.
But the internship is see your, 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 your license card here.
Yeah, that was my question around the parking situation, because I know we have issues.
Yeah, so they have to have a car at school to do this program?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna say, I mean, they're, they can also work hours outside of school. I mean, they come home and go, we're just giving them an option to get a jump start on the afternoon.
We don't want any kid to be denied this opportunity because we don't have a parking space for them.
Yeah, I get that.
Did anything ever come from that? You were looking into that, I know that.
We, we can get a few more parking spaces, yes, at least. Yeah, we can add on, yeah, in the spring.
Good.
Yeah. One of the groups, how do I say this? The municipalities are looking for students to intern as well. The off, the town offices, the fire department, the police department. So that's another way that students can go because they can take the bus after school and get parked off to those locations.
A walk, yeah.
So they can, because I forgot who was saying to us last week, the town governments really need people to, to apply for positions there. They're not getting, right, as many, some folks here can speak to that, they're not getting folks to come and do that kind of work as much anymore. So if students have a chance to see what that experience is like, to support the towns, work for the towns, highway department and so on, so we need those folks. It ties in, again, ties into the portrait of a graduate work, right? Not everybody's going to go to Ivy Leaks and become professors or whatever they're going to do, you know? These are, these are real jobs that, and keep our students here in our towns.
Actually, is job program going to be a career here? They're not, I totally understand. I did have a whole handful of questions on that, so that's a great idea.
Anything else? Okay, wonderful. We're going to vote later on the internship program. Now we'll let Janelle and then Paul. So go ahead, sorry, Janelle. I skipped you.
No, no, don't worry. So I submitted a brief report on four topics, tiered focus model. Um, so I submitted a brief report, done four topics, um, tiered focus monitoring, the new IEP form for the state, uh, paraprofessional data that the school committee had requested, as well as medication delegation, although we're on some time constraints, I'd like to highlight the new IEP form for a few minutes. It is the most impactful area on our students, our families, and our staff. So for the first time in 20 years or so, Massachusetts is updating its IEP form. IEP stands for Individual Education Program, so students receiving special education services have an IEP, um, it's a document, and the changes to the document are really quite substantial and significant. There's a lot of technical changes, just by virtue that the form is very different, and there's also gonna be a lot of adaptive changes required to implement it. The form is very intentionally focusing on student strengths and student vision, so it will completely change the direction of team conversations, it will change the amount of time team conversations take. There's a lot of training that's happening with staff, we have training sessions planned, um, with the fam, with families in the spring with CPAC, um, as well as looking at putting together a schedule, and also to supplement the training that we'll be doing with CPAC as well. Um, and there are also connections, um, to the budget proposal as well, because there are, you know, changes that come along with that new IEP form in terms of software, all the software companies that manage IP's are, you know, needing to upgrade and invest in the new form. The training, um, there is a lot of opportunity of professional development and training, and that is, that goes along with the design of the new IEP form, and really asking teams and school districts to approach some of the topics and the conversations differently. Um, so there's also a need there for some administrative support, we anticipate that that studio, we're implementing the new IEP form, and, um, we're, we're using it to guide the process for student conversations, that those needs are going to take more time, and that's why there requires some administrative support to offset that time for that special education coordinator. So certainly, um, I, you know, I welcome the school committee to join any of those training sessions for the new IEP form. I know that some of the topics in my report for special education, um, can be unfamiliar, and certainly, you know, we have to provide additional information on any of those topics separately, like in a workshop format, or whatever might be helpful.
Right. That's great. I, I, that's a great thing you just brought up about school committee members maybe popping in on some of the professional development, so we can see, um, so that can be something I work with Carol, to get some of the schedules and put it out to people, and if people are interested, they can pop in.
Sure. You know, we've, um, the focus here too will be on providing training opportunities for families to come and learn the form, and we'll be doing those in the meetings as well, so that those are very accessible to families.
Great. Does anyone have questions for Janelle?
Janelle, I just wanted to thank you because you're, especially because it's such a different area, um, it, they're just, so you break it down so that even the layperson can understand it, so I wanted to thank you for that, because it's, it's really, it's important information, um, it's a big part of our budget, and you make it really easy to consume, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, awesome, thank you, Paul, last but not least.
Good evening. Um, I, you also have my report, it is also very brief, um, highlighted two things, there were some changes since I did, uh, submit this. Um, I did want to take two seconds to thank the people that I thanked in that report, so I'd like to publicly thank, uh, people for, like, the, uh, school attendance children form, um, and two town folks, uh, Dawn Porter and Elie Salt. Um, the state, we have a good handle on, uh, the kids that are in our district, that are in our schools, are going to school choice, that are in school choice coming in, um, but private school, um, students, we don't have a lot of data on, and we rely on the towns to help provide that data, because we have to provide it to the state, um, and so, um, so Elie, Sid, and Dawn, you know, did human's work to, you know, pour through, um, census data, um, that they get every year, um, so that they can pass that on to us, and we can then in turn, um, report it to the state. We did, um, as I mentioned in the report, the civil rights, um, reporting is almost always delayed at the end, and sure enough, that's what happened last week, um, their site basically gets overwhelmed, because so many people are trying to enter data, um, you would think at this point, after, I think this is my probably seventh or eighth time doing these submissions, because they're every other year, um, and every time, um, it ends eventually, um, the good news is, we were able to get ours certified yesterday, so we were, um, able to meet the original deadline, they did extend it to March 15th, but we were able to submit yesterday and meet the original deadline. And then the other big change is the website, um, originally was supposed to go online last Wednesday, and then it was Friday, then it was this Monday, and now it is this Thursday, and so.
Okay, I was like, I don't know this, you knew, oh, God, this is something.
So fingers crossed, it did work, um, a lot of, so as I learned more and began to add more content, um, there was, there was some places where it was like, wait a minute, I know I asked this content to be migrated, where is it? And so there were some gaps and things that were supposed to be moved over, they fixed those. Um, then there were some gaps where, um, on Friday, I noticed that, um, we had probably roughly somewhere around eight pages that were on the website, but you had no way of getting to them. So, um, there, there was no navigational tool within the website to get to that page, so yes, it was there, there was data in there, but there was no way to get to them, so they had to, to fix that. Um, they fixed most of those issues, um, and again, at this point, we've just added a little bit more content, and so hopefully on Thursday, fifth time's the charm, uh, we'll have a new website up.
Can I ask you a question about the website, this might, um, align with the intern? Is this something that a student would be able to do to?
So we will, so we will start, you know, and then having, you know, setting up certain spots, so again, there are some pluses to this new site, so for one, um, we can assign editing privileges, but restrict publishing privileges, so you could have an intern updating the content, getting it all ready, and then either Lisa, or myself, or, you know, an administrator, and then a group for publishing, so, um, there's a lot of, a lot of pluses in the new site, um, there's a lot better integration with multi-language, there's much better, um, integration with, um, and we need to, like, you know, we've had, you have things on the site that, um, there's a lot of things that you can put publishing dates on, so like, right now, we have stuff, you know, like, that's eight years old, and I don't know why it's still there, but it is, um, much more of the content on the new website can have start and end dates, and, um, have, they have a highlight date, so if you wanna kind of keep it in the forefront for a week or so, but if you want it on for a month, that's okay, so, but an after month is gone, it's gonna automatically disappear, so, I, a lot of pluses to the new site that comes up with that, and I think, you know, people will appreciate it.
So this is, a student couldn't intern through this, is what I'm thinking?
Yeah, so even like, in that interview, for sure, like, that would be part of, you know, we have, um, they, we have a, uh, I don't know what they, what they call our social media, we have a person who kind of does some, um, puts some stuff together already for Carol's newsletter, um, we can certainly do that personally.
Yeah, thanks for that.
With, you know, potentially doing some stuff work before we get that program going, um, but, uh, again, I may look forward to that, because we'd be able to distribute some of that, um, editing, and so hopefully that lots of people just have fresh content along with them.
Do you know if we're gonna try to have a coordinated calendar for the district?
Just gonna ask that, wonderful question.
It'd be really nice to go to one calendar.
Absolutely.
So the way, and again, I, I like it, so like, uh, a lot of these things are considered posts, so, um, and then the individual calendars can choose which posting boards they pull from, so like, on the district calendar, we can choose to have it pull events from all three schools. So the district calendar could, you know, so if John updates something at, at Berlin, um, the district calendar can pull that in automatically. So if you hear, yeah, you haven't seen it in practice yet, but yes, that, again, the same thing happens through the website, so like, there's things that John thinks is important enough that not only does he want to share it on the Berlin site, but he'd like to see it to pop up on the, the district site, if it's easy enough to do.
All right, wonderful. Any questions? Go, sorry, go ahead, Mike, any more?
How's the progress with getting rid of all the paper forms that parents need to fill out, moving them online?
Totally separate from that, um, but it's still working.
We talked about doing it through the website, didn't we?
Um, it, it'll be done through, it'll be mostly done through Power School.
All right. Any update on that, or no?
Still working progress, we're, I'm getting through some of the forms, but.
So we have to add power to the elementary students don't have Power School?
Yeah, they, they do. So like, the ability would be there, we would have to, that would be part of, of a roll up, we would have to train, you know, elementary parents.
Elementary parents, that's what I meant, don't have Power School, we don't use Power School, right?
They don't until fifth grade, so the fifth grade, starting at the end of the fifth grade, you do, but we'd have to start pushing that back.
Okay. All right, anything else?
Um, I just, reading through the curriculum, the two, like, the, is that gonna be available on the website as well? Reading through that, like, it, I think with budgets, in particular, it's really nice to be able to look through and say, oh, that's what the class and kids are thinking, um, but I don't know that.
You mean the program study?
Yeah.
I think they put that on the school's website.
They do.
Yeah.
Not yet, until, until you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but yes.
Yeah, because this one is not approved. It's a first read tonight, once we approve it. All right, we're gonna move on. So we're gonna bang through the subcommittee updates real quick, we're gonna have Carol give us a quick update, then we're gonna take a five-minute break, and then we're gonna get into the budget, which I'd like to do at, like, 10 after 7:00. So let's give some quick subcommittee updates. Jess, do you have anything for the student success and technology?
We didn't have a meeting, but Lisa's working on.
This student handbook.
This student handbook.
Oh, great, thank you. Thank you so much for working on that. All right, that's great. Okay, budget, so we're gonna get into the meat and bones of that tonight, but Julie and I met with, um, Nancy and Carol, and then one thing I just wanted to mention is that Julie and I did go over this budget with Nancy, and we do, we did endorse this budget, so just something to keep in the back of your minds. Um, Lori, any update on the superintendent evaluations upcoming?
Just that we're on target with our timeline, Carol can do her presentation this evening?
Yep.
Um, I will probably, Jessica and I will probably meet for our next meeting, or sometime in between, before May, we have to actually pull up the evaluation, so we'll just update you in between there, but basically, it's Carol.
All right, awesome, awesome. All right, and Mike, anything on policy?
Yeah, we've got three up for vote tonight, if you have questions on it, we can do it then, uh, you first saw them in September, October, I think.
Yes, yeah. Okay, great. All right, Carol, let's give you a short, and then we'll take a quick break.
And then you want to catch the SOA presentation, just the.
Um, do you wanna do the SOA presentation?
It's a first read, in case anybody had any questions, I just wanted to make sure.
Wait, what's a first read? Oh, the Student Opportunity Report.
That, right.
No, it's on as an agenda item.
Right, it's on as an agenda item, that's right.
A first read, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, that was in Sally's report.
Yep, did, I didn't know if you want to say anything further about that, that's interesting.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was just being read this one, but, um, it's basically this, this, DESI requires us to write an opportunity act plan every three years, so John and I get together, and they provide you with a bunch of data, and they ask you to pick, um, any area focused on in terms of, um, student groups, and then they give you, um, different, um, strategies to, that they feel are of certain implication to improve some of the areas that you have to turn for, so that report was written based on the template they gave us, and, um, it has to be of, um, a pre-physical community, and submitted by the headquarters.
Okay, so that will be a vote for our next meeting. Where is said report, Nicole, what folder is this in?
It's under reports.
Is it in Sally's?
The report's.
Oh, all right. Oh, yeah, I see it, sorry.
Some of the agenda is an item, but it's in the folder.
I see it, it's a Student Opportunity Act Plan, all right, it's labeled first read, okay. All right, did anyone have any specific questions on that? And if you guys, you know, didn't have time to, because we have a ton of material on this drive, we, we can have, we'll have time for questions on that next time, so, okay. All right, great, Carol.
Sure.
Take it away.
Sure.
And I want to have the budget left.
So you have a copy of these, of my goals to date, um, my progress to date, I did take into consideration the suggestion of color coding, uh, that Jessica had made, I don't know if that's what you had in mind, but just so you could clearly see, um, the connection between the progress and my goals to the specific, um, standards that are there, um, so I hope that that's helpful. I did put a reflection in there as well, areas that I, I thought went well, and things I wanted to work on, just to highlight that, and my instructional leadership, um, the opportunity to try to get into classes, um, at the schools more often, which means I have to come out of my office and bog down there and try to get in. I, I talked to the admin team this week about that, and said, Jim, my job is to oversee these folks and help them do their job, the principals, and the curriculum folks, you know, and so on, so for me to be able to meet with them weekly, as we're doing, and get in and walk with them, and see what's going on in that classroom, allows us to have that dialogue about what's happening there, and to make improvements, so it's really key for me to get in and go, to go with them, so that's the area I want to continue to focus on more, um, this half of the year. I think this part of the year, we've been spending learning to gel together, it is a new team, um, and it's been really important. One of the things I, so, you know, so all the things we've been trying to do, and looking at new templates and protocols, about making reports, you see the change in that, I hope, um, we, we met and we rehearsed, that everybody went through their report with one another, so they heard what the other one's gonna talk about, and what I saw this time around is that they critiqued each other respectfully, work on this, you may need to say that, that's a trust that was built up in this team, and I'm just so proud of that. So that takes time to build those relationships, and I think now, now we get into the work, we have been doing the work, but I think that this is now, we're, we're kind of really good space to continue that together. So that's the area, and instructional, um, leadership, uh, I, I don't know where else I can go, as far as around town, Fred, where's Waldo?
Well, we've been everywhere.
Tonight, and all those other dates, if you, I'd say if you name you do more, but I'm gonna say no.
No.
I'm not doing it. Um, and then the last part of it is really the area I, I know I want, am needing to focus on, rural learning about the budget process, particularly for regional school districts, and I, that's how I've been utilizing my mentor, um, that you met, Sheila, and she's been so helpful, in fact, we're gonna meet, uh, talk this week about, um, where we're at with the budget, and, and any help that she can give us, and give to me moving forward with that. Any questions on the goals to date? Anything you want me to do?
Thank you for doing such a good job documenting.
You do.
Like, day in, day out.
I'm like, how wonderful this is. It helps us.
Gonna make our job so much easier.
You have no idea. We wanted to change the evaluation model, we didn't realize, we just needed to change the content that we were given, and you've gone above and beyond, Carol. It really is quite helpful.
I told you, it's really what it should be, I just, and it helps me keep track of what I'm doing, so it's kind of a win-win for both of us.
Very grateful, and I, Lisa and Jessica have not done the evaluation yet, but it will be a nice first time for them to do this evaluation with this evaluation, yeah, so thank you.
And I appreciate that feedback, I think that, I showed Lori a first rough, rough draft, I called it, and it was like colors all over, and I'm like, this is looking weird, so I adjusted it, and that worked out. A question came up about the March conferences, you know, we are trying something different. We have worked very hard with the BBEA to have come up with a new idea for a spring celebration of learning. I think parents want to know what's, what, what's going on in the classrooms, you meet with the teachers in the fall, there's always opportunities through the year to, again, set up conferences, but the, this period of time is to go in and see. But the, this period of time is to go in and see your child's work, see the progress to date. Go in and look around and see the kinds of learning that's happening in the classroom that, that we felt was a missed opportunity in the past. We've been working, we met several times with, with members of the BBEA, the representatives. You see a list of all the things we agreed upon together to do. I'm excited about it. You know, I, I think that the team is excited and apprehensive and just not knowing what this is going to look like. Again, it's something different. We're trying it. We talked about this during negotiations. If it doesn't go well, we'll make adjustments. We'll go down a different path, but we'll never know until we try something, something different. So this is the work we're doing, celebration of learning at the elementary schools and blanking on the name, student showcase, right? So even if you don't have children at Tohato, you just have an elementary, see if you can work your way over here and see, go into the classrooms and see what's going on.
Oh, yeah.
Pick a couple of them. They do amazing things. The exhibitions alone. Do ever have a chance to go to exhibition here at Tohato?
Could we take the younger kids to the high school to see the older kids work?
Yeah, you can.
Might be beneficial for some fifth graders.
The principals are going to send out a notice Friday to start inviting. And we're really pushing the children to come, come. We want them with their parents. And so if you want to come here, of course.
Okay. We also want to piggyback on the showcase at, so at 3:30, because we understand that families will be around, involved in this process. We're going to invite the fifth grade parents, you know, to, at 3:30 to commit orientation, scheduling presentation.
Great.
To get them settled in. And we're sending out invitations.
I was going to say, field sort of schedules.
Great. I'd like to do a survey afterward for the parents and just get feedback and see how this worked, what your thoughts were, what you learned from the experience, if it was beneficial time, so.
And this is what came out of the last contract?
Yes, it was right. Right, we were looking, right, for something to have that time, to make that connection. That was the piece. It was like no connection with parent, between parents and the schools in the spring. So we thought we would try this idea, like I said, something different. So we're all in with that and the something different. So here's the moment. I'm going to beg you to vote for this. This is a first read of this calendar and I can hear one person's voice now going, not half days. And I'm not going to mention the name of that individual, but we all know who that is. Don't do it.
He's not very smart.
Don't do it. Can't vote. So.
Me too.
It is, I realize that childcare is an issue. We have talked about that. We're trying to problem solve some possibilities around that. But this speaks to that idea of having continuity and professional development time for the teachers through the months. We have had old-fashioned professional development with one-shot deals. You come in three times a year, whatever, full day. Okay, you'll learn something, you go home. Or not, or you don't come in, whatever. This is beneficial to the teachers. It's beneficial to the administration because they can focus on areas like math training over time. The coaches can work with them. The paraprofessionals will get training over time, right? As they're learning to do areas of early literacy and mathematics. And then the other big piece of this, now I'm totally blanking, is the, oh, it's just blanking. The vertical, thank you. See what they think for me, because you know. The vertical alignment. There's got to be connections between the elementary and the middle high school, particularly between the upper elementary and the middle school. They never have time to get together because the middle high school's doing their thing and we're doing our thing in the elementary level. And this, I know that Peter spoke about this, a commitment he and John have made and they talk with one another. You hear already that Joey Florinai has been involved in math work and looking at Ames Web data, right, with the middle school. We need to do more of that with the teachers. One of the things that Sally did for us was pull together the list of at least some of the districts in Massachusetts where this is common, commonplace. And they're strong, strong school districts. Many of them have been doing this for years. It's just part of the culture of what they do. So while it's an inconvenience, we still have the kids in school more because, not more, but they're in every day rather than taking them out full days. And we're doing this over several, over many, so you see, you see what that looks like on the calendar. So first read, questions on this at this point? Yes.
Just looking through, it looks like there's, it's really heavy on the Wednesdays. And I didn't know if rotating the day of the week would be better than, you know, just so it's.
So that came up and with the BBA, EA as well. What we realized, so on the elementary level, they would switch around the specials on those days. So the special wouldn't be missed, all the, the same special all the time. Tohato rotates its schedule anyway, so that Wednesday is not always the same time. So that's why I think, I think that we were leaning toward keeping it on the Wednesdays. And it's the middle of the week too, which keeps away from those kind of weekend or those Friday before the long weekend. Yes, or whatever days.
No, consideration two is, it is a consideration for working parents, right? But it's a tech, the schools work with direct departments in their towns.
That's a great idea.
To.
That's a great idea too.
We have these shared these facilities and where we can hold PDs at the high school and used to do.
Yeah.
Not just classrooms.
No, that's a great idea. We were, we were thinking of trying to get lists of students from Tohato who would be willing to babysit. Like who have that background and we're looking for, right.
I have a direct market, I have interest.
Something like that. So we're, we're, we're working on that to try to offer opportunities for parents who need, who need that childcare during that time, so.
Carol, we've got two listed in March.
One is the conference.
Open house.
They're both listed as PD, early release and conference.
Yeah, one is just our early release PD. And then the other is, I think because we use this for the conferences, right? For this.
So there'll be PD that day and the conference.
And the conferences.
But it's, it's a, is it a half day or no day?
It's a no day.
No day.
PD in the morning, conferences in the afternoon.
This year.
But it's yellow, I think, and that's.
Yeah, it's a yellow.
That's confusing.
It was tough call.
So that day, so the, is it the 26th that's going to be a day off?
Would that be a blue though? Okay, I'll have to think about that one. No, it would be blue, it would be.
Yeah, the, that blue. It would be the tealish blue.
It's because the parent teacher conference and early release are the same color, that's why it's.
Yes, they are. Good catch. We did run, we did work collaboratively with the BBEA too. So they have looked at this numerous times and they are, I would say, very supportive of doing this kind of schedule for PD. So I just want to make sure we knew that, we brought that forward to them already.
Are these mandatory for all teachers? What's your attendance like at the PD days?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because I know a couple of years ago, I think Jeff and you mentioned keeping track.
Yeah, that's why we shifted, a couple of things. We shifted away from Fridays before, long weekends. That's why we tried it more in the middle of the week.
Are they allowed to use personal days to get out of these?
They can, yes. They can. Do we discourage that? Absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
But, yeah.
Carol, what's the difference in this calendar to this proposed calendar PD days?
You mean the current? The current year, we have four P, four blue. I have to go back and look. It's a good question. But we have more full days. Now we've broken them down here, which is, yeah.
So it's one day, this is three.
The other thing I think it would be important to look at with this calendar, the coming year is the student hours. We make sure we, on the second page, just making sure that we have the, at least the minimum number of student hours, time on learning, time on learning, and we have more than that, so.
So it shows the end of the school year, it looks like? I was just trying to think of the end of the school year this year.
It's the.
The 14th.
It's the 14th Friday of. It would be two snow days. It was the 12th.
So this moves again to the 20s or 19, I guess?
No, it's 13.
The 13th.
It's still the 13th.
The 13th. The other is the holiday.
Honestly, I like, sometimes I feel like we're getting up kind of too early. I mean, I love it, but.
The joke attempt.
Yeah, now that you're fancy.
Yeah, where you go, we do this every day. This is good, I like the calendar. Anyone else have questions on the?
Um, June 23rd, should that be blue?
That's the day we would be getting out, we had five snow days.
Oh, if all five snow days happen.
Just the color code?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, last day, last day.
So the, you're actually like.
The H should be the 10.
And I was just curious, what is this on the top versus like 17 students, 17 staff?
That's the number of days that they would go to school.
The number of days, okay.
The 17 student days, right, 17 staff days, some days are.
Oh, I see.
Last year we discussed like the Friday and the student absentee, or the teacher absentee. But the prior year's data was a Friday before break. So I was curious if last year's data was interesting or.
I don't recall.
Sorry, that is.
That we can, yeah. If you'd like, I can look into that.
About how many people's a good Friday off?
Yeah, like it was a student and a model staff.
We do have in the contract religious.
The floating religious.
Right, right. So we do have that.
Yep.
In terms of so to burden for.
Carol, to Megan's point, we're going later into June. Why can't we start school after Labor Day?
We can.
Let's do it.
I guess when the sports start. Definitely nowhere to be putting home, it's right.
Yeah, but you're, you're in practicing before school starts anyway, even when it's in August.
I think, and this might be a little dated in a couple of decades, but I think you could only practice with the representatives. That's correct. Sorry, ridiculous.
Okay, so athletes, but what about everybody else?
Yeah, that's a huge chunk here at high school, though. I get that's not going to matter for elementary school.
I think in the past, and this has to do with the heat in June. Now we're getting the HVAC, right?
Yeah.
The air can do, that would be always an issue.
Yep.
And I think families wanted to get out in June. The MCAS were over, the testing, parents wanted to take vacation. It's, it's like six of one, half thousand, you start, you start later, which is great. I mean, I guess, but then, you know, you go later. And then when we run into snow days, because we have to make sure we get all the days and we're pushing it to the end of June more if we get those snow days.
But John always talks about how important it is for kids to be in school. You talk about how you front load the year with the important academic stuff at the beginning of the year. More people might be willing to just take off for their vacations in June than there would be who can't take their vacations in Labor Day. You know what I mean? So if you've got a vacation for the last week of August, now you've got to miss those first few important days of school versus the days in June you might miss are after MCAS, they're after all the testing. So it's less of a burden to miss.
One thing just that popped into my mind is that because in this area, so many schools have shifted camp weeks and, you know, just note, just parents wise, right, like school, you know, I do notice that camp weeks end like that third week of August, right? Just so for parents and childcare that, you know, it's kind of, since it's been such a shift and send mass over, you know.
To our college.
Yeah, that's just something to think about. And I would love coming back later, but, you know. And we have to be conscious of the HVAC and so. In Tohato, there are certain costumes that are very, very, very warm and there's, there is essentially, I mean, there's a system, but it's not, you know, there's central air. It's not central.
There's still in the past, there's colors, right? Like chillers or something.
Not chillers, but the one, the last one, just like the main column.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So some of the costumes are very, very hot in June, very hot, so.
But they're colder in August. August is pretty warm too.
The Memorial.
I caught it for the Memorial, I remember.
Obviously.
All right. So what are we going to do?
It is pretty, on August, if I remember.
There's definitely, the weather's definitely changing. We're getting less snow days. The weather's hot in June and August. So it's definitely something to think about, but.
That's a way to get two weeks.
I'd like to keep it this way. I hope, but if you feel differently.
I don't care, I love snow days. I love snow days, I love half days.
I don't know.
I love it all.
Start till the end of June.
All right, it's an interesting point. It's an interesting point. All right, so why don't we take that, why don't we talk about that? And then we'll, let's talk, take that offline, Carol. Let's chat that. Why don't you talk with your administrative team offline and then.
You're going to call the corporate.
About that.
All about it, Mike.
Kev. All right, Carol, did you want to talk about the MSBA for one second? And then we're having a two-minute bathroom break and then we're banging through the budget.
Okay, you need to let me, you need to vote to let me submit the MSBA statement of interest for the roof.
Everyone understands that, right? What it is. It's very straightforward. We're applying for a grant from the state to pay for the roof through BES. We will not get 100%. We might get 30%. It's a long shot, it could be years off.
But we're putting it in.
But we're putting it in. And it requires a school committee vote. I'm going to read a statement and qualify it for me. I'll do that after. All right, let's take a two-minute break and then we're coming back at 10 after. All right. That is, that's two minutes. Go ahead, two minutes, you got two minutes. I told you two.
Just enough. Yeah, absolutely.
Do I want to do the vote?
Do you like that? I think that's.
Yeah, thank you.
You do.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's not too late. And I've never had. It's. Put it in this corner. Yeah.
That's my only.
That was something that I wanted to be on. I. I'm. I'm. Unfortunately, that won't. I'm. I'm. Oh, no. Keep in mind.
The consent election versus the paraprofessionals election, I never did get that permission, which is why I like the body type. The day my father to read the regulations, which I got the right to. The consent election, I can get you to the same place, it allows me, you guys don't even have to take a vote for the permission, you could just say authorize me. I change the vote, I guess you guys can vote to authorize, like, we're not doing anything that's wrong there. I want to speak, letting the school president to give us a suggestion that, that our school is okay. They didn't need permission. Right, without one such a favor of the permission. What that then does, which satisfies, so it requires the election. But keeping in mind that the petition, they say that they have at least 50% interest, but these people will really...
They're there, 15 of them are.
Coming from the MTA, this would come from, this would be anonymous.
Exactly, this goes for our, and you can decide who you guys like, or... Um, I need to... It's a question that could receive whatever approach of election. We could just, we could do, we could do that, we could agree that, like, I would be working with their... I don't want to mention, you would have the vote for a sentence at every pitch of their schools, but I'm not sure if... So, so, I don't know, I work with... This is just...
Alright, so to get started, Kim, you want to break down?
Yeah, yeah, I can do that.
Seriously, I was like, I gave one of the boxes.
Thanks! We try it out! I just have one, this is how. I saw that, I love the term. Alright, alright, guys. We're gonna get started back up. Alright, let's roll. You ready, Kyle? Alright, so, am I, am I on? Alright, guys, so we're gonna get started back up. Kim is gonna take, so, by the way, last week, we had, we had met about the unionization of the paraprofessionals, and we need to have a vote on that tonight. So, Kim has, we have talked about the committee, the need for the committee to recognize the unionization of the paraprofessionals, or the committee to do nothing, which would not be the preferable option, because then there's different consequences. So Kim has a, another option for us, that she has researched and found, and wants to explain it to us, because we do have to vote on this tonight. I think this new option is the most preferable, so I'm gonna let her take that away, five minutes, and then we'll jump into the budget.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you to him so much.
If each of you who participated last week, it was last week or the week before, we had a discussion, two weeks ago, we were in a meeting, wow, time flies, about the Mass Teachers Association filing a petition to organize the paraprofessionals. The paraprofessionals are currently organized in what they call a unified group. So it's sort of, it's an informal labor union, but it is a labor union. So, they, that unified group had 30 days to file what they call a motion to intervene, meaning we would like to continue to be on the table and considered as a union going forward. That would then create, any election that occurs with a union, it would allow the unified group to participate. That unified group did nothing, so as far as I'm aware, they didn't file, um, any kind of motion to intervene. So it's, is what they, what the law considers it, it's called, they disclaim interest, meaning they no longer have interest in being a unified group. And, so nothing happened with them. The committee could still voluntarily recognize the Mass Teachers Association as the new representative of the parents. Or, and I, I said this to, to Megan and to Carol, I don't get a lot of new unions in the public sector. They seem, they're already there, that's typically the issue, is that everybody who wants to be in a union is already organized. In this situation, I decided to look at whether there's an alternative to doing absolutely nothing, and just letting the train go down the, the tracks on its own, or affirmatively recognizing the Mass Teachers Association, is something in between. And there is, there's this doctrine called a consent election, and this is what we did not talk about. In a consent election, the school committee would authorize me to interact with the attorney for the Mass Teachers Association. I would tell that attorney, yes, my client agrees that there should be an election, but there will be one. In other words, with a voluntary recognition, there's no election, it just means that that union automatically becomes the bargaining representative of the parents. There was some discussion, I think Mike brought it up, well, how do we know if they actually support this? And I said, well, we know that by the paperwork filed with the Department of Labor Relations. It says on there that at least 50% of the, of the people who could be in the union voted for it, or submitted a card in, in, in favor of that. And the agency of the state has to look at that, and so we, we take it for face value that there is that many people who signed a card.
Is this, is this something to be discussed in open meeting, or is this supposed to be...
No, this is fine, no, that's fine, but this, this intermediate situation means you're authorizing an election to go forward, which allows those paraprofessionals who are ultimately gonna be allowed to vote in the election, to actually vote. And what does that mean? It means that people who submitted a card and said, I support, I support, I support, they're all gonna vote. Sometimes, we have determined through looking at data, that people either changed their mind about the card that they submitted, or they submitted it because they felt a little pressured by other people to get them to submit the card. But if there's, in a, in an election, and, and a union election is always by secret ballot, there's different ways to do it, I'll get to that quickly. But each person who's eligible to vote will vote in secret ballot. So they can decide for themselves on the day of the election, yes, I'd like to be represented by them, or I don't wanna be represented at all. And that's really what the vote is gonna be about. I would like to be represented by Mass Teachers Association, or I don't want a union at all because that other unified group is out. Okay, so that, that's what they're gonna vote on. So, if I, you know, reach across the table to opposing counsel and say, listen, my client's fine, there could be an election, we'll do it this way. We can agree on the method of election, it could be through mail, or it could be onsite here. I think someone from the state would probably, will come and oversee an election if there's one here. Um, before that, we will have to be on the list of people who are eligible, so it would be all parents. But one of the other things that we talked about in our meeting was, to voluntarily recognize a bargaining unit allows both parties to agree on who gets to be in the union, the way the petition is written, it just says paraprofessionals. And, you know, there are other people whose positions are like parents, but not parents, and are they gonna be in the union or not in the union? We can still go through the process of agreeing through a consent election, and as a matter of fact, you do have to agree who's gonna be voting. Who votes are the people who are gonna be eligible to be in the union. So this intermediate process, as I call it, a consent election, will honor basically what I think, you know, labor unions have, have, you know, strived for for years, which is to have an election, right, let people make that choice, and you're letting them make that choice, rather than just going, okay, we're good with the cards. And we don't get to see the cards, we never saw the cards, or the, with the official name is the showing of interest. We know, know what they look like, I guarantee you there were 50% of people that said they were interested. But this then gives them that opportunity, they have to actually vote. So, that would be my recommendation for the school committee, is to take the intermediate route, which is to, uh, vote to have me just basically, um, advise the Mass Teachers Association attorney that you will, you know, go forward with a consent election. Does anybody have questions about that process?
When did you say expired the 30 days, was it the prior?
Yes, so, when the petition for representation was filed by the Mass Teachers Association on behalf of the paraprofessionals, the existing union, the, or the unified group, had 30 days to file a motion to intervene in any election process that was to be had down the road, in order to maintain their interest in representing that union. If they don't do anything within 30 days, it's deemed to be a disclaiming interest, meaning we're not interested. So they don't have to affirmatively say, we're not interested, they can let time pass, it's deemed, we're not interested. That time has passed, I think it passed of, uh, yesterday, actually.
Hmm, that's right.
Because they filed the petition on the 26th of January, they got 30 days, but that would have been the weekend, and the next workday was yesterday. And I've, I would be notified, because I did enter an appearance in the matter, and I, I didn't get anything. And Carol told me, she, I asked her to check as well, she didn't get...
So, nothing might come of this, although we would be voting on tonight, would be to authorize you to, to advise the MTA that if they do step forward, we wanna go down the road of having a consent election, meaning we want the paraprofessionals to have a secret ballot, the right to have, actually vote and say if they actually wanna have a union or not, versus just authorizing the union.
Yep, that's what it was.
Or versus doing nothing, where then they can just do whatever they want.
That would, what would happen if you did nothing is, most likely, there would be the election anyway, it, they would drive an election, but it would be, it would require the school district to participate in a hearing to determine who's gonna be eligible to vote, and things of that nature, whereas we would be agreeing on who's eligible to vote. We don't need to have intervention by the state in that regard. The state will honor the agreement reached, there will be a consent agreement between the Mass Teachers Association and myself on behalf of the school district, and we will, you know, determine who's eligible to vote. Okay, they, because I think you'd need, like, the name of each person.
Yep, that makes sense. Okay, what do you guys think?
I mean, I like the fact that they actually had to vote about it.
Yeah, that's the fairest way to do it.
I also like that it's, it's a secret ballot, because if people are really honest, sometimes you think this is a good idea, or you don't, and they don't feel any pressure.
Yeah, like I said, I think it honors what labor unions are about, meaning we tried to get people to be interested, they've said they're interested, but ultimately it is, you know, on behalf of the individual to speak, and like you said, if it's a secret ballot...
Something mailed to their home.
Yeah, you don't feel that there is pressure placed on people to vote a certain way.
Yep.
I realize we're not like, you know, the auto workers in Michigan, but it's, it's basically, it's a microcosm of the same thing, right?
Yes.
So it's, it, it does kind of honor what the system is supposed to be.
Okay, what do you guys think? Thoughts, wanna vote? What do you think? I agree with Lori, Julie, and Jess, I like the voting aspect of it, because they might say, no, we don't want it, and then, done. What do you think, Mike? Good?
I just don't understand unions as much, so I don't know, I can, I can ask.
There are, as I said before, this is one of the more academic areas of labor law, um, that you're gonna come across. It, it, it's just, like I said, it's governed by a lot of rules and regulations.
Okay. Anyone else?
And it also stops the hearing, it, it...
Yeah, but that's the hearing, right?
There won't be a hearing, right?
Which would save the time.
Yeah.
Regardless of what we do, they're going forward with some sort of organization, right?
We don't know. Did you hear what it said, like, they expired?
A vote, a vote for something, so they would both be in an organization, they would vote to, what, to be independent?
No, the job, the vote will be in the union, or, well, be represented by Mass Teachers Association or no union. That's the way the ballot will be structured.
Right, so they would be individual workers.
Yeah, it would be just how they are now, they have these, we have these unified agreements. So then there would be no contract? If they, if they do nothing, they have no contract?
No, no, if nothing is done, there's going to be an election anyway, there will be. But the people who get to vote, maybe a broader group of people through having a hearing with the state. Because the state gets involved, and the state, right, they're asking for information, right? And some of the information that they've requested is, who are all the paraprofessionals? What are the job descriptions? Who else has work that's like the paraprofessionals? So the state can sweep into the process additional people and say, okay, we think this group of people is similar in function to the parents. We're gonna add them to make them eligible to vote. If we do a consent election, that, that's not gonna happen, because one of my positions will gonna be, you file the petition to represent the parents. That's who we're talking about.
Okay.
So, that's the difference, is that you would, the, the election ultimately is not gonna be any different in terms of what you're voting for. Because as I said, the unified group has now, they're out of picture. If they were in the picture, the ballot would be unified group, Mass Teachers Association, or no union.
Okay, alright, I get what you're saying, I get it.
Okay.
Alright. Alright, so could I please have a motion to authorize Kim Rozak to advise the MTA that BBRSD would like to have a consent election for paraprofessionals in the district? Okay, Lori and Julie, all in favor?
Aye.
Or any opposed? Alright, I'm an aye as well, that motion passes. Thank you so much, Kim. Alright, that's great. Okay, now, the main event, what everyone's been here to hear. Let's, so we're gonna jump into the budget. Nancy, do you wanna talk about the food service thing first, or you wanna just go?
Sure.
Alright, it's got to be pretty straightforward.
Yeah, so real quick, in the drive, you'll find the food service bid, the food service bid is published Monday, February 19. Um, all proposals are due on Monday, March 18. And the request for contract award will be presented to the school committee on Tuesday, April 9.
So do anyone have any questions about that RFP?
Just where, where in here does it talk about how we want our food staff to remain employed whenever this comes about? Yeah, I, I couldn't find it either.
Page 28, 8.1.
The FSMC is not us, yeah.
Again, on page 16, C13.
C13?
For employees, new employees, rehired, and food services to be employees of the Berlin, Boston, Regional School District.
It doesn't mention anything about pay or anything for them? Are they gonna be hit with a reduction based on whatever the company's bid might be, or they just kinda, nothing changes for, as they are now?
Yeah, they're up for, um, their unified agreement is up on June 30th.
Okay.
So we're meeting with them, it will be this next week, to start talking.
Okay, and the only other question I had, so this is the way you decided before, we thought we were talking about weighing this versus hiring another internal manager and go back to what it used to be?
Just because this went up to bid, doesn't mean that this is the direction we have to go. It's just that posted out and...
Yeah, this isn't a vote, it's just like an FYI for us, it's like part of our update.
How about that, the budget topics that we're about to have?
This is revolving, it's not part of the budget.
So if we had to hire a new manager, wouldn't that...
It all comes out of the food service revolving account, so.
Alright.
Alright, so let's move into the budget, we've got everyone here for questions. So Nancy, do you wanna get us started? I've asked Nancy not to stand up and present this 40-page PowerPoint, I think we've all read it.
I think we're gonna just give a really...
You wanna, that's a great idea.
I'm just gonna, the district-wide budget itself is a 10%.
Sorry.
Can we put it on the screen?
Do you want, we're gonna, this is going out to the public, but if you wanna put it on the screen now, I don't know if, do you have that capability?
Uh, I would need someone's laptop.
You don't need your laptop, can I?
My laptop. I do not, I have a whole, I have the, I have an ancient laptop, because I can do that.
Hey, everybody here has a laptop, I have access to it.
Everyone has access to it.
Let me do the public hearing. So the district-wide budget overall is, is presented as 10% increase, totaling $2,177,177,677. I'm sure you all had time to review it, so I'm gonna go really quick. So if you look on page three of the presentation, it outlines key highlights and notable increases. Um, our Berlin Memorial School has a 3% increase for $140,528. Foreston Elementary has a 12% increase at $688,744. And Toledo is presented with a 12% increase at $1,349,397. I categorized each school individually, it's presented with expansion categories. These are categories that are presented to you with the budget updates, there are administration, instruction, other services, maintenance, operations, list, charges, and other district tuitions. You can find the details of each of these categories on page two. Major increases for each category are highlighted in detail within school, and the detailed backup is available in the drive for your reference. Capital requests are detailed on page 20. And additional revenue sources and assessments for each town with increased amounts from fiscal '24 are covered through pages 21 through 22. And additional revenue sources and assessments for each town with increased amounts from fiscal '24 are covered through pages 21 through 28. And in the appendix is your enrollment history and supporting information. That is my super quick overview, and now we'll leave it for discussion.
So do you break this down anywhere between the level and above level? I missed that.
It, so it's done a little differently this year, differently than last year, so it's done by school.
These are just the elements, right?
Yeah, so it's the increases.
These are just the increases, not the full budget?
No, it's the full budget. So like, for example, if you go, you can start with DMS, if you go to page.
So this whole thing's basically just the above level? All the the detail, the detailed things?
Yes, you have your increases and your details.
So page five, page six.
Yes, and that's your increases, correct. And then the highlights of the increases on page three.
Is there a reasonable, sorry, is there any here, right?
Yeah.
The whole budget, if you open the Excel spreadsheet.
No, I'm looking on page five of your presentation.
Yep. Yes.
Is that not considered level service increase?
It wasn't, this is different than how it was done last year.
Yeah, I understand.
These are your increases from '24 to '25 by category.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And then how it was done, if you go to page three, those would be considered your above level.
On three?
Yeah, that's probably the best way to look at it. Those are your major large increase highlights, above level.
So I think a few things to note. The number for the SRO, we only have.
What page do you want?
Well, the SRO is throughout. We, Nancy included SRO, and she has it for Tohoto and for BES. I think it's under other services, right?
Yes.
So, and this is why I'm saying we gotta fine tune some of these numbers. So right before vacation, we met, right before the the school break, we met with, we had a great budget subcommittee meeting with the town of Boylston and the town of Berlin. And we got some more information from the towns. So the town of Boylston advised us that they, the school resource officer, the entire cost would have to go into the budget. We had it broken down that we had a piece going to the police department and a piece going into our budget. They want the whole thing to go through the school's budget, so.
So would that be a part-time police officer?
Um, they want the full cost, just how they.
Full cost of the vehicle, the training.
Everything. Yeah, you have that meaning, thank you.
So what would he do, what would he?
His hours work.
What would he do in the summer for the schools?
Still in the school budget. That was how they wanted it. So, did I misunderstand that?
So the concern was that the amount of training that they'd have to do would take up any time that they would actually be on change for the.
So that's my question. Are they gonna be doing any work for the Boylston Police Department, or is it the Berlin-Boylston Regional School District's private police department?
No, it's the intention of the police chief, and I think I can speak for him saying this, that he would utilize that officer in the summers and then holidays and the vacation.
But the schools would be paying 100% for that.
That was what we were.
That was what we were told by the the Boylston FinCon.
Yeah, I don't, how does that make sense?
I don't know. So I think maybe there, they just said, when we brought that up, they said, well, we were under, we were under the impression that they needed X number of weeks of training. And we said, well, during the summer, they're gonna be filling in. And they said, well, does the police force even need another part-time officer? So it was kind of like that back and forth. So we can certainly try to negotiate that. This was just what they had told us at the FinCon meeting. It was right the week before vacation, right, Jess? Yeah. Yeah, it was like that week, right before break, we went to that meeting, and that was how they advised us. So definitely the cost of the car and the equipment and the uniform.
So what Berlin has to say about that, since they'd be paying part of it for Tohoto?
Exactly. Berlin has not commented on that yet because this was new information. These numbers are not updated in this, so.
I would imagine that officer might fill in for some officers in Berlin during that time, maybe?
The officer from.
The SRO.
No, that would never have been the original plan.
Not the original plan, but if the school district is paying for it, it's basically the school district's private.
Maybe they could go to Berlin. Yep.
It's like the school district's private police force. National Guard or whoever, you know?
No, it was 25%.
So I would imagine then that officer could get shared between the towns as needed.
We had it in there, I think, Nancy, what do we, we had it like.
25% BES and then 75% Tohoto, which would then be what, 35% of that, 75% would be Berlin.
But we didn't, what we had it in originally was like only 80, or was only like 50% of the cost, right?
Yeah, like 60, 2,000.
Yeah, schools versus towns.
Yeah, we put X number, yeah, because we put the vehicle to the town, we put the uniform to the town, and then we put like.
Just did the salary.
25% of the salary, but we took 25% and put it back to the town.
Yeah, regardless of what the numbers are, it's gonna impact the MOU.
I was just gonna say.
Yes, regardless of, yes, thank you.
It will void the MOU completely, and I, it would be like if we had a teacher going over into the police department.
Yeah.
We can't manage, we couldn't, I could not manage a police officer.
Yeah.
No, I wouldn't, I don't even know what training that.
Yeah, so that's a point that we need to negotiate. Yeah, sorry, Dan.
Why do you decide on private security, what's the school doing?
Well, they, I mean, that's.
I mean, that's, you're talking about security versus an SRO, completely different position.
Yeah, we did the salary based on the school days.
Yeah.
You did a big sample days.
So what's in this number right now?
Salary based on school days.
That's all that's in this current number.
But no, so it's not the actual number?
No, that's what I'm saying. These numbers need to be, some of these numbers need to be fine tuned. So what we're discussing tonight, I guess the point is, I don't want to nitpick over numbers. Because we are gonna have to go back to them if we, if this committee decides.
Well, you need to nitpick a little bit to understand what it is.
Absolutely.
You, you have seen this every day of your life for the last three months.
Unfortunately.
We have not.
Yes, no, I agree. But what I'm saying is this number isn't correct right now, or we're gonna have to go back to the towns and negotiate something with them. I agree, I don't think that's right. I think that if John Ananziata is, if the police force wants to use that officer in the summer to fill in, but the town is saying, oh, we don't need that. So that needs to be fine tuned. We gotta figure that out. But I guess the question tonight is, do we want to have an SRO in the budget or not? Do we want to fight for having an SRO?
Well, if that's what we're gonna have, then we can probably come up with other ways to utilize that person. If we're, if the district is gonna be paying for the whole thing, that he's 100% or she is 100% committed to the district. So training, whatever it is, working with other SROs, other community members, probably do, I don't know, maybe it's a good thing.
Yeah, but but we, then we'd be financing a car, like how is Carol keeping track of a police officer, their car, their uniform, and does it, it's kind of.
All right, you bought a truck last year, this is just a car.
It's like a $75,000 vehicle.
It's a car.
I think the.
Does it have to be a police car if it's not gonna be a police officer?
Right, I was just gonna say that. Valid.
Yeah, what is, what is the training entail that's different for an SRO that is for a regular police officer?
Oh, it's a few, there's a lot of. Yeah.
There's a lot, but would we say want non-police training? Because you don't have to, you don't have to be a police officer.
As I was standing from that initial meeting, right, like they, you're still trained.
They have to be non-police.
They shouldn't have to graduate.
They, they come to us as a graduate, but we haven't paid for that. Their ongoing training would only be focused on SRO.
Very true. I mean.
Well, I, I'll ask you a question.
They have a non-police guy depending, right, because town, this is where, again, I have to go back, because towns sponsor that police academy stuff too, right? So that's, that's a piece that would have to be worked out once.
Okay.
That's, that's where it doesn't seem to make sense that.
It sounds like it, it doesn't make sense, I agree with you, but it sounds like it could bring different unseen opportunities to the district. I don't know.
Um, I think what you're finding, the continuing education is important, so, you know.
Mm-hmm.
The perception is that the school vacation, the summer vacation will be consumed with training. Is that true or not?
Right.
And if it's not, then then that officer would be available for the town, so.
Yeah, John didn't seem to think. John seemed to think that there would be time in that officer's schedule to work for the town. But the town is saying, we don't need any more officers, so why, we don't want to pay for that through the police budget.
But would it just do the white clothes in summer?
I missed, I couldn't hear what you.
I just put the white clothes in the summer.
They could do stuff for the schools in the summer.
Well, that is for schools.
One person wanted to do that.
Well, I was actually thinking to Mike's point about about relationship building in the summer. I used to know officers in in other towns who did service work in the summer with the student, with students and families.
I mean, hire every person. I'm sure there's a lot of things you could do.
And I don't know how, the other part, to your point, like I don't know how it works, the oversight as far as being a police officer too. I think that's what we're trying to, this is like two different pieces.
There's so many pieces, but I guess the first question is, does this committee feel that we need an SRO in the schools? We had this forum. We didn't, we had some turnout.
I didn't receive, I got no feedback or con other than the.
So does this committee feel that we want to have an SRO in the schools? I mean, that's kind of where we are right now. The town has kind of said. Do you guys want this?
Did Lisa's survey say that they did want an SRO?
Yeah.
Oh, they didn't support it?
Well, it's, they felt safe as it is.
Oh, I thought it said that it's supported.
That all, 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 all of the students felt very safe and welcomed and comfortable in their current environment. That's what the survey reflected, is that students felt safe.
The SRO though, as we learned from the forum, would be more, it would not be a security guard or a safety officer. It would be more focused on kids that might need another outlet.
In the building.
Yep, in the building, so.
In building, no, near safety in the building.
Yeah, maybe dare programs, stuff like that, something that Berlin has in their elementary school because they have Officer Goody. That Boylston does not have, and then, you know, Tohoto being a high school, we learned most other high schools do have an SRO, right, in this state.
It does say here in in the survey that they all, that the family supported the addition of an SRO.
Okay.
And the family one.
Oh, I think it might be speaking to the the, as usual, it is students feeling safe at school, just a piece of.
Right.
Yeah.
The SRO, you know, the the safety at school, the feelings of being safe. That was actually one of the higher ranking.
That does make.
Yeah, I would hope so, but we're not looking at this as a safety.
I was looking at it from a taxpayer standpoint though, like what do the taxpayers want for the school? This is what the students want? Like, I mean, my kids want less homework, but it's not necessarily in that interest.
So I, I wonder, is there a way to put it on the work as a summer program so people could truly vote on that?
That's a great idea.
I love that, that's very creative.
And I think we suggested, we did speak with somebody at the coffee chat who was very supportive and did suggest that.
And, um, I think when we think about this, we also have to, we could have all kinds of thoughts around this, but we have to be cognizant of, you know, putting that job description out and having applicants that would want this job. So if this person is not gonna be part of a police department and might be used for a variety of ways that we might think is useful in the summertime, that might not be a job that somebody finds appropriate or something that they would want to participate in. So I think we need to be really cognizant of, like, we can vote for this, but, and then it's money or whatever, and but then we're unable to hire somebody because it's a position that no one wants because they're not part of a police department and they are not part of anything. Well, they're part of the school, but they don't have the camaraderie. There's a, there's a very distinct camaraderie when you are part of a police department. Um, it, it's a very different thing to take that person who's been trained in that department and then put them in a school, which is a very different goal. So I have anything to think about that.
I mean, with the MOU, that has to be revisited anyway.
Yes.
Why don't we go with Jess's idea?
Yeah.
I am definitely, I think that's a great idea. So one of the plans after this meeting next week, Julie and I are gonna get a FinCon, or, I'm sorry. A budget subcommittee meeting on the books, and again, we will invite the town FinCon so that they can actually actively participate. I see we've got a lot of Berlin folks here. We have Matt from Boylston, so.
When is the warrant closed?
It's already closed.
It's already closed.
It's already closed.
But there's a placeholder for our budget, right? So they're just waiting on our number.
Well, in the, yeah, it's not in the budget, but I mean, you.
Oh, the warrant's closed to add an article for the SRO.
Issues of things like the debt exclusions for the large capital openings you're asking for, those are kind of things, that's why the budget numbers are needed before I further date. That had to have been pushed in before on this stuff, because we can't even get our budget figured out because we don't know what your numbers are. Even so, that's why the, no, it's a very lean process you're at right now.
Okay. All right, all right, so, all right, let's get back on track. So I, I want to go through this, or I want you guys, everybody already went through it. I want people to come up and say, or to let me know, or let everyone know, what you think should stay in this and what you're, if you're thinking there's stuff that should come out. Or are you thinking it's lacking anything? I'm looking for a high-level discussion.
So I hear you took out my classroom list supply.
I wanted to discuss that, yes. All right, let's discuss it.
Why don't you take it out? We talked about putting it in. The committee never discussed taking it out.
Yeah, so Julie and I talked about taking it out a while back when the towns came. It was substantial. The cost was, what was it, like $50,000 a school or something?
No, all told, it was less than $100,000.
Yeah, it totaled like 80 something total for all three schools.
All right, so when we heard from, I think Berlin was the first one that said, you know, try to keep it at 2.5% and we were already way up at whatever percent we were at.
Yeah, but you didn't discuss that with the committee.
We didn't discuss it with the committee, so it's not, that's what I'm saying. This isn't set in stone. This isn't like this is out for sure. This is like this version, we took it out, but I want to hear what people think about that, about putting supply. So it's about $80,000 across the three schools.
So John didn't get to go through his SOA presentation, but when I read that, I saw the numbers of the high-needs students. Uh, and one of your subcategories was economically challenged. Am I right?
There's more, sorry, I'm.
High needs.
High needs, but then you, there was three subcategories.
Right, which are part of the high needs, the.
Yeah. Yeah, it was, this really.
It's a student disability, you get, you get English language learners and you, um, those.
Higher.
Low income?
Yeah, so we're talking about these lists that continue to grow for individual parents to support. That number of students within our district is growing. That was the point of your whole report, that stat in there, was that it's growing. I think this is, the anxiety that I saw this cause parents last year, this, to be fair, it's the first time I really made attention to it. Because Jen usually takes care of that, but the anxiety it causes for what is a requirement of the schools to the students, to the parents, to have for their public education should be funded publicly. If they're requiring it, the the extra things that parents might want to get for their kids or whatever, whatever they want to do, different colored bags, whatever, that's fine. But if a school is going to require you as a student to have a particular supply, the school should provide it.
I, go ahead. I just, I, so I'm just thinking back to when I was in high school, which was like in the dark ages. And when I was in high school, we had to buy our notebooks. They didn't give us those. We didn't have to, we didn't bring tissues, I don't know, just, we, things were wrong.
Well, you could buy any kind of notebook you want. This is, you need a specific red-covered half-inch spiral.
Well, so, but then I'm gonna go back to one.
Which the diner could probably get for 10 cents, but a parent might have to pay 3 bucks.
But I'm thinking even back to when I first started teaching, which was over 20 years ago, we had lists that I taught in Westford. I taught in Berlin. We had lists in Berlin, we had lists in Westford. The kids would go out. It's, it's been like this forever. I understand your argument, Mike. But when I look at a thick budget like we have and the needs that we have, I just feel like this isn't the time when almost everybody else does it all over the place.
Sounds like we're getting rid of 150,000 in SRO and.
But it's, but it's $80,000 that we can put towards something else. I, what do you mean getting rid of? I understand the distress and everything, but it's not like it's something that people don't do all over the place.
Yeah. Go ahead, Carol.
No, you go ahead.
No, okay.
And then the nearby district that the kids get $20, and they buy it all.
Yes.
And the PTO helps.
We talked about, so Julie, Carol and I, we talked about that, having an organization.
Is that every, every kid or just certain kids with needs?
Well, PTO.
That was last year.
You had a buy-in to that. That was so expensive though. I think it was like eight.
Yeah, but again, that's another volunteer thing. This is, you're requiring a parent with maybe two or three kids to spend 80 bucks a kid just for pencils and pens of a specific color and ink and, there are a lot of parents who can't, can't go for that. Or they can, but they, they gotta make a choice and it's, the anxiety, you, you wouldn't believe the anxiety that these people went through.
Would you find, if I have the principle, a way in, because we have talked about.
Yeah.
So if you hear their perspective and also a possible solution, or a possible.
Well, if there's a solution, so I'm like, yeah, you're right, and John Adams would agree with you. Um, for inappropriate, the John Adams would be for inappropriate. The reality is that people are probably, you know, have had schoolless forever, I think. There are two things, one is that, in Berlin anyway, we cap the list. The things that your kid needs at twenty-five dollars. And no child who can't do that goes about, that's why there's a general supply budget for those kids. Some things we just buy routinely, as found, you said, red binder, basically have red, those tinkle folders, you see, for your kids.
Yeah.
We buy those, that's something that comes out of child supplies. But every kid comes with their own, a lecture, a old sock, some of those things. And then we give them a list, I tell the teachers, and they have to give me the shopping list. This is what you're asking for, this is how much it costs. Do parents, some parents do a lot more, absolutely.
Yeah, parents do a lot more, they, they, you know, you've got boxes of tissues on that list. You, you've got boxes of tissues on that list, all sorts of ridiculous things that, why can't the school provide paper towels and tissues for the building? Why are they, why are they being asked, why are they being asked?
Well, so, for example, you know, all due respect to the students, maybe your paper towels you can buy for the children, don't actually wipe up any water.
Well, then buy a different one, then stop wasting your money.
Well, and that's more another time. Um, but so there's, your point is it's too expensive for them to do the basics. And I think for the majority of people, twenty-five dollars is not another reason we're requesting.
How much was twenty-five dollars?
What's that?
I don't recall twenty-five dollars.
That's the limit I put on the teachers. And I make them show me, we usually use Staples as our base one. So, you have box pencils, a sharpener, a Sharpie, and crayons. I make them give you a staple shopping list.
It's because there's a wish list.
That list, that list needs to go out through the electronic forms on the website to parents, 'cause I don't think that list comes out.
Well, those are, it's actually on our website every day.
The shopping use, with prices, links you can buy from?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I mean, parents can figure that out.
And there's a wishlist too, like, you don't have to buy tissues, soap, wipes and all that stuff, like, that's a wishlist, like, that's like, please buy too if you can or whatever, so I'm sure you're not including that in your twenty-five dollar limit. There's parents.
We can stop at that part, and your point.
But there's parents that want to, like, there's parents, so you could have a school-wide wishlist, like.
The parents want to do it. The parents want to do it, absolutely.
We, yeah, and we should do a mid-year replenish, because I think there's parents that be like, unhappy to, I wanna help, I wanna, there's people that that's how they feel like they're involved.
And that's.
So, but like, I agree that there's others that there might need help.
It's actually, there's so much that's donated, we don't.
Donate again.
The problem with like buying stuff like some of those ball suppliers through PTOs, it kinda goes to what you're saying, it's tough to get the volunteers to do that, and.
Yeah.
It's, we're already struggling, it's, it, you know, in some places to get volunteer support. Uh, you know, we're very blessed right now, you know, Berlin's been very at compare for, hasn't always been that way.
That's right.
Totally.
Thank you.
Yeah, no. Yeah, volunteering, volunteering is fine, but we're on top, we don't control the volunteers. We don't control the volunteers, we don't control the donations. We're trying to set these kids up with the supplies they need to get educated. And, starting in August, you know, first of all, there's anxiety because you can't go on your final summer vacation, because you wanna start too early. These lists, these lists are out of control in some cases, in some cases, they're reasonable. I don't understand why we require a kid to have a certain particular thing. The school could get it for about eighty thousand, how, parents are probably spending twice that at their prices, 'cause they can't get the bulk discounts that the school could.
Not too much.
Not too much, but I mean, it's like fifty bucks a door or something, it's, it's a lot to some people.
So, well, we, we have to go through, we have the vendor WB Mason, and I can, I can attest to this. I, for years have gone to Target July, Target July has the Dollar Creole, you know, a dollar, thick markers, a dollar, thin markers, a dollar, um, Creola, um, pencils, colored pencils. And every year I buy, I buy ten, ten, and ten. Um, I, for WB Mason, for our general supplies, thirty-nine-nine, four-nine-nine.
So, there's, so there's a couple of things there though, not all parents can get there in the first week of July. And if, if our supplier's not giving us the best price, then find another supplier.
It, it's a racket, I, I mean.
Oh, yeah, of course.
I mean, the sale, yeah.
I agree, you gotta shop on the sales, or like the Dollar Store or something like that, it's probably, 'cause same thing for my office, we use WB Mason. Sometimes we just go off to Amazon or Staples because it's just cheaper. But Mike, I think at the end of the day, at least my perspective on this is, Boylston has come back and they've said, okay, if you guys go over this amount, we're gonna have to go to an override. And that amount is really, really low. Um, so.
Megan, with all due respect to the select board members and finance committee members, our job is to figure out what the schools need.
Mm-hmm.
And the voters can decide if they wanna pay for it or not. If they don't, then, okay, there's a process for that. I'm not trying to, to write anybody off here.
Yep.
But we have a duty to get the schools what we need. We had a whole long conversation about how we need extra parents or extra teachers or extra whatever it is for these supports for the students. Our, our job is to figure out what, what do the schools need, approve something that is, is reasonable that we need, you know, not everything in, in one year. We have a whole plan to guide us through this. And the taxpayers and the voters, they can choose to do it. It's one of the reasons why the school committee budget is separate like this.
So, what, go to the.
I was gonna say, well, so, I, I completely agree with you, where it has been the norm that people have bought supplies, and there, there are families that struggle and we do need to help them. A family can donate a case of paper towels, but they can't donate a kindergarten paraprofessional. Do you know what I mean? Like, these are things that families can do and, and have done, and we should be more cognizant of the low income and try to help. But I'm just thinking, when we're, when we're pared down.
My comment to Megan about that was, in general, the number, not just.
No, I know, but I'm just saying, when we're looking at, when I'm looking at this list and where I see paraprofessionals or, um, special education transportation, or, you know, a, a math teacher, I'm thinking that's so much more important than notebooks and pencils and glue sticks. And that's where I'm coming, that's just where I'm thinking, Mike. I, I'm not disagreeing with you, I completely agree with you. I'm just saying, given what we have this year, I think we have to be a little more, um, frugal about what we want. As a taxpayer, if it was me, I can understand saying, hey, we need, you know, business office support or, you know, full-time kindergarten paraprofessional, more so than glue sticks and, and notebooks.
Well, what's that kindergarten paraprofessional gonna teach if the kids don't have the glue sticks?
I'll donate some.
Like a, like a gift card drive that'll be done at the end of the year for families that might need it, so like a.
Great idea.
Target gift card or something like that.
But it has to, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Stuff like that, I think, has to float through the PTOs though.
Yeah, that, that's a great idea, but, I mean, we're talking about the budget and what the schools need to teach the kids, the school should provide.
But so, like, the, the supplies would be like eighty thousand, so you look at for a memorial's first father services, special education, former nurse, transportation. I mean, that's like eighty-eight thousand, so.
I just wanna throw, we, we, we've had this discussion. I absolutely understand what you're saying, I think the question that's not being answered is, do we have enough pencils for the kids at school?
Yes.
We do.
So, why are we buying more pencils?
We have enough.
Why are we buying more paper, why are we buying more?
Probably need to be, like, fixed.
That's the question I wanna know, Mike, 'cause I, I could see how, the way you're hearing this is, the kids have to buy their own pencils 'cause we can't afford to buy the pencils for.
That's.
I just wanna make sure we have pencils.
It's not, it's not pencil, it's very specific, yellow, seven-inch, mechanical.
Tyconderova pencils, pre-sharpened.
Okay, but do we really need to teach the kids? I get what Mike's saying, we should be paying for it, right? So, that's the first question, because if we don't have pencils and paper for the kids, and don't we have a bigger problem? And yes, I would absolutely support eighty thousand dollars more to buy the pencils for the kids and pens or whatever they need and paper. I think it's the, I think we're trying to figure out the language for these lists. So, are they suggested or we'd love to have or wishlist, can we have, would somebody like to volunteer to get?
All the cut boards or all the.
Twenty-five, you know, 'cause this is what we'll use it for, but the other, 'cause that's the other thing, what do you use it for? Do the parents know what they're using this for? Because we're gonna do celebration of learning and we're gonna be putting a portfolio together, and would somebody like to donate that? I just wanna make sure, we, first of all, the first question is, do we have enough of the supplies? Or do we have to do the, we have to do wish lists?
But also talk at the end of the year.
Yeah, I have so much crap.
You gotta put it next year.
Plenty, can I use?
I just reuse it, I reuse it.
I'd use like seventy-five, like twenty boxes of them, we give them. You know what I'm saying? So, and that's the question I.
And to be honest with you, at, um, at the middle of high school level, um, there are no lists that are that specific. We're, we're just like, you know, you, you should have a three-ring binder, you should have some paper, you should have something to write with, you should feel comfortable either writing with a pencil or a pen with something to write with.
Or we'll give you one.
Right, yeah.
Whether you use one, like, pen, the two you'll use.
Everybody, we all, you know.
Right. Or we will give you, we can, because we have enough to buy you a pen.
Right. Buy you calculators, does that still, uh, T I L.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that, that, yeah, that is the thing.
But you own that, you get it for, yeah.
They're pretty cheap.
Yeah, it was cool by now.
Uh, I think they need like the Texas Instruments, like, you grab the calculators.
You can't, you can't do that on the iPads and the.
And that's, that's.
Yeah, it was a good idea.
Was that?
Required to have certain.
Or AP testing, yep.
It, like.
Okay.
And Jack's got three of them, we can.
So, you can't use like iPads on the test, you have to use a specific thing.
Oh, no, and we don't.
So, that's, so that's another thing, you have to use a specific tool to take this class, but we're not gonna, you know, we're not gonna pay for it for you.
We have some tomorrow, yeah.
Okay.
But then, if you buy it, it's like you own it for life.
Right.
Well, and, and that's.
It's yours.
The challenge, 'cause you're like, that's a good example of, maybe we need to look at developing a collection of those very high-end.
Certain things, yep.
Per meter buy, it's not a calculator. But, you know, at the elementary level, we were taught, we were laughing here, we do ask for certain specific Tyconderova pencils, 'cause they're gonna last a long, it's expo market, 'cause they're gonna last a long. You can buy the crappy ones from the Dollar Store, but they're gonna be useless.
But do you, but, but do we buy Tyconderova pencils?
What's that?
If they're so good, why don't we buy them for the kids? Why are we not ordering them?
Well, because then you're gonna be spending eighty thousand dollars.
Do I, do I Tyconderova pencils?
And everything else, we drop a line, that's that three bucks.
Public education.
This is just, here's my take on the whole thing, if we had unlimited supply of money, but we are being restrained and we have, I get what you're saying, like, our job is to put, and that's what we're doing tonight, but at the end of the day, to push an override through for pencils, I wanna push an override through because I wanna fix up these buildings, get a new field at Tohoto. I don't wanna push an override through for pencils. Now, if we're gonna group it all in together and say, this is the override we're putting forward, but doing an override is a huge process. It doesn't just involve us agreeing in, I believe the select board has to approve an override for the town, and then it actually goes on the ballot. Um, so it's not something that is just, uh, you know, the school committee doing in a vacuum. Um, so, my understanding in Boylston is, if we hit a certain amount, it's going to have to go to override.
Okay, so does this number that we're being presented tonight, is this under that amount?
No, it's, it's, it's more than double the amount.
So, how many teachers do you have to cut to get to that number?
And then, here we are, because that is exactly where we are, I was just thinking about that, that is where we are from last year. Because we have contracted increases and we have special ed needs, just like we did last year. Where to get to that number, which I am hearing is now five hundred thousand dollars, our number right now that's being presented is one point three-five million in the assessment increase, right? One point three-five million is the increase, Boylston is saying five hundred thousand, so yes, we would have to cut things to get there because the increase in just the teacher salaries and the special ed transportation, which we don't have a choice, we have to pay for, is over that five hundred thousand dollars. So, in order to get, you know, any other need, we'd have to cut other things in the budget with that number. Now, I'm hoping there's some wiggle room with that, I don't know. But I think that's what we need to be looking at this, I, I don't, I don't know.
Alright, let's, let's do the work. Carol, how many teachers do we have to cut?
We could cut five hundred thousand more, how much?
No.
Sounds like a million.
No, we're, we're at one point three-five million and they want us to get to five hundred thousand, how many teachers is that?
Teachers, programs, courses.
One, three, five, oh, oh, oh.
I mean, what's the at-level budget?
Ten.
Ten, ten teachers, from just Boylston.
A good ten.
A good ten.
That's eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
We're just talking Boylston, right?
Yeah, we're just talking Boylston.
Is this B E S or Tohoto as well?
Both.
So, Berlin could be affected too.
It's the at-level budget.
Berlin will be affected by Tohoto cuts as well.
That's Tohoto too, yeah, okay.
Eight hundred, we're eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the limit for Boylston, what they want with this budget, which doesn't include the full SRO cost and doesn't include supplies. So, yes, we'd have to cut eight hundred and fifty thousand. The teacher contract increases in Boylston is a hundred and seventeen. That's just at B E S. The special ed transportation is another hundred and seventy-two, there's three hundred thousand right there of your five hundred. And then if you look at Tohoto, the contracted increase is three twenty-seven, you take sixty-five percent of that, or already over the five hundred thousand. Sorry for flying numbers too fast.
So, Nancy's answer is ten teachers to cut.
What, what page is the at-level budget?
There's no at level, sorry, go ahead, Nancy.
So, there, there is no at level.
Well, I know what the increases, so like the at level with those contract and.
So, your best.
Best throughout.
The best way for you to look at that is to look at the indivisible pages for the schools.
Look at the assessment pages.
Like, for example, go to page, if you go to page ten, and then you look under personnel, and it says educators association contracted increases, a hundred and seventeen thousand, seven thirty-eight. That, you can't change that, that, there, that's, that's contracted.
There's other contracted things in here too, I, paraprofessionals.
But we have to change it, so, I mean, what else are we gonna cut?
Well, you have to cut bodies, you can't just say you're not getting a raise this year.
Yeah.
Right.
And same thing for the special ed transportation, right? There's nothing we can do about it, we can't be like, oh, we're not gonna transport you. We have to cut bodies.
So, the thing we've all know, the special ed transportation is currently with, yeah, a hundred and seventeen dollars a run and it's going up to over four hundred a run. It's still out for bid, but it's gonna be between three hundred and four hundred a run.
Who sets those persons up?
What is a state?
Company, so we're, we're, we're going out to bid with the Aspen Valley Collaborative. Um, and it's just, it's supply and demand, and it's.
So, double these.
Yeah.
More than double.
More than double.
Huge hit.
Yeah, so, um, I mean, a five hundred thousand dollar increase on a thirteen million dollar budget is what percent? I mean, that's not even inflation.
We have to provide some blood or we can cut that?
That's a question.
Yeah.
We have to, we have to provide the special ed, tuitions, transportation, and, and everything that goes along with it.
I mean, salaries are seventy-eight percent of the.
What happens if we don't provide it? That's a serious question.
Like.
Yeah, we can't pay for it, the town says we can't pay for it, so what happens? Well, we have to, we have to do that, we have to cut maybe fifty.
We have to cut teachers, this is just like what we, this is, this is the situation we were in last year. The difference is, last year, the towns had free cash and they had wiggle room with the levy capacity. We used that, I think they kind of were trying to tell us that last year, we used that last year. Now, we're at.
I mean, let's, let's cut ten teachers, what subjects are going?
And so, that's, maybe we have to do that and then we go to an override, I don't know.
I mean, you've got three kindergarten classes, you know, I mean, that's.
We've got, we've already got.
We've got two.
We've already got twenty-two kids per kindergarten class at B E S. Why don't we just.
We ended up with larger class sizes.
Yeah.
Yeah, your classes.
Forty, forty kids in a class, right? What's the number? Is that twenty right now, you said?
The kindergarten class, there's sixty-two kids in kindergarten, sixty-one kids, sixty-three kids, so there's twenty-one, twenty-one in each kindergarten class, so if you.
I mean, you can have thirty-two in each first grade class, that's no big deal, they deal with it.
I don't think classrooms could physically fit thirty-two kids.
Gonna have to figure it out, knock them off.
The desks aren't all gonna fit in it.
Tables.
Yeah.
How much does that cost? But we have tables, we got a whole room full of tables, it would be.
So I mean, if that, that's the situation where basically we may have to, um, we may have to talk about an override. But that's what we're here to discuss tonight, I, I wanna hear what all of you guys think about all this, cause I've been stewing on it for a couple of days now.
It's perplexing.
It is.
Is this always the case, like every year?
Well.
No, it's also since covid.
Gotten worse since covid.
We've had a lot of grants.
We did grants, we made a lot of, you know, we added the assistant principals last year, and.
Yeah, I think the schools have suffered for a while.
We've suffered and we're trying to, yeah.
The towns are also, I mean, it can't be, we're also in this situation because we have explosive building. It is what it is, it's no one's fault, it is what it is, but it's not like we're sitting here and asking for crazy things, we're saying we have more people, that's why we have a middle school, and we have two schools, a middle school and high school. They got so big that even as Lisa said, she doesn't know how they did it before without those two administrators, we have long grants for that. We're just trying to keep up, and I, I think it's, I think everybody's between a rock and a hard place right now.
That's exactly what it is, which is what our consultant pretty much said to Carol and I, when we laid the situation out, and he's like, oh, you're between a rock and a hard place. Um, yes, this is not an easy situation, so, um, something else Laurie said. Okay, yeah, so Laurie, piggybacking off of what you said, the cost to educate a student, the, the taxes on these, these homes that we're building. The taxes don't even cover the cost to educate a student, let alone the police, fire, road, whatever the else costs, the family.
Well, we also have a huge apartment complex going up.
Right. So we're growing without the revenue.
So that's not. Right.
The commercial real estate is what we need.
Right.
And in Boylston, there's so little of it.
Right.
So.
Target's too sensitive.
Right. So this is the situation that we're in right now.
So, so you're saying these numbers are not, the ones we're looking at, these have the SRO in here?
Well, it has a piece of the SROs.
Salary.
Just the salary. Just the salary for a hundred and eighty-five.
Is it five hundred something?
No, shit, yeah.
So, so okay, so the numbers that in here though, just, it isn't accurate though, it's just a.
Well, it's not that it's not accurate, it's just that the town has come back and said, if you want an SRO, you need to include everything in your budget, not just the salary.
So where, where, where's that in here?
It's not in there yet.
We didn't know.
This is all new, where you're throwing kind of new data at you.
And I believe that figure was.
Came out of our meeting, Julie.
At two hundred is what, when you add, right?
Yeah, that's like, yeah.
So add an additional two hundred, I'm telling you.
Add an additional one.
Probably one twenty-five.
Yeah.
It was a additional one twenty-five for the vehicle and the training. So if we want an SRO, it's this number plus a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, all to Boylston. And we're already.
Well, no, but then.
Oh, yeah, a piece goes to Toh- yeah, you're right. So it'd be, yeah.
Yeah.
But we're already over by.
And that's ignoring the capital costs?
Capital is gonna be totally separate, because I think that the towns try to use free cash for the, they try to use cash for the capital. But we have limitations in Berlin that we've, we've talked about, so I mean, we can, if you guys wanna look at the capital budget now, we can do that.
I can't picture the, if the, if the SRO was taken out of the budget here and done the way Jessica said, would it still impact our budget?
One way or another, it, it's still gonna be, it's gonna impact the school budget, yeah.
If it was something like Jess said, it would probably just be what this number is now, or close to it. Cause it would go back to the.
Well, I was thinking of the cost of the car and the.
But it sounds like it's too late to do that now anyway.
Well, I guess for Berlin.
The warrant is closed, and I think the Boylston warrant's closed too, or no?
We just told her that last night.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, cause I feel like, I feel like the SRO, well, I mean, personally, if I, if I was voting, I would vote for it. And I, it's not about me, it's about, it's about the tack, it's about the town and everything else, and I feel like if we, if we could possibly get that as a warrant items, the tax paid payers could decide about it.
Yep.
Rather than putting it into our budget and taking away from the educational leases.
Okay.
That would be my suggestion, I, I like that personally.
Maybe, what's the difference, it's all coming from the same place anyway.
Well, because some people might say, we're okay with what you're asking here, but we don't like the SRO piece, I feel like that makes it on its own, and then they can decide if they wanna finance that, cause it's so costly.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, so what they said, at the end of the day, is the levy capacity is one point two million. So, that's for the entire town of Boylston, that includes the police, the fire, everything. So they allocated five hundred thousand dollars to the schools, it was. So. Whether we put, I guess my point is whether we put the SRO as its own article on the warrant, or if it's separate, it's still gonna go towards that one point two billion dollars, which is gonna push us to the override. I, I'm not, I don't know that I'm against an override this year, I, I told Carol at first I was, cause it's gonna be a ton of work. There's lots of rules around it, like Carol could not go out and openly campaign for this override, it would be something that this committee would have to take on. So there's just a lot of different things we have to learn, it would be a lot of work on our part.
So the choice is, put a number before the voters at town meeting that would cause that situation.
Yeah.
Or, let's just start cutting teachers.
Yeah, that's pretty much kind of, not necessarily teachers, but we'd have to cut stuff.
Programs, which is gonna.
Programs, people, we have to cut heads, I don't know that we have to cut, right, paraprofessionals, staff, whatever, however, that would be Carol's and the principal's decision. I know Matt, would you like to say something?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Obviously, no one wants, no one wants, right?
No.
The town's like, we don't want this, no one wants to, to do that. That being said, there's a difference between going for an override at a level service budget, right? To say, look, we need this to not cut ten teachers, as opposed to saying, we want an override and we're gonna add this, 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 and this. It's two very different conversations.
Yeah.
So, I don't think it's a matter of go for an override or cut ten teachers. I think it's, what's the most responsible thing to do here for our schools and for the town?
Yeah.
Right, there's, there's a balance in there, and it's our job between the towns, the three, the two towns and the schools to figure that out together. But I don't think it's either, should never be either or.
Yeah.
Decision, so.
Gonna have to come to some type of compromise and figure out if we, if an override makes sense.
Exactly. We're not the only town in this position, if you look around.
Yeah.
Say, the vast majority of towns are in a similar or will be in a similar position very soon, so.
Yeah.
I, I think, don't look at it either, look at it as, what's the very best we can do without pushing and pushing and, and make sure that we're gearing the kids what they need and giving the backfactors. And be responsible for that.
I mean, last year, we had the at level, but then plus the admin and then the paraprofessional, right? Yeah.
I just want to get this.
Yeah, so what Nancy could go through and, um.
What would that do to the district if we didn't add what we're trying to add, which is powers and special ed and math teachers for the new graduation requirements and athletic director? Not financially, but what would it do to the actual one, how far behind would it set the district?
Well, we certainly wouldn't move forward at all, but we definitely, I think we'd slide backward again, because I think there are certain things we truly do need, we need that math teacher over in Tohoto, definitely.
That part of the graduation requirements from the state, right?
Right, 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 and that's, that's what's happening now, that's become, that's mandatory to run that financial literacy program.
Yes, we need at least one teacher.
We need another teacher over in Boylston Elementary School.
Yep.
That's, that's a must. I, I, one of, one of the things we have been looking at is what we could delay, I don't wanna say cut them, but we could delay. But it still wouldn't bring us anywhere near that number.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, that's the problem, is even if we delayed, but it, we, I agree, I think there's certain things in here that like, we just need.
Yeah.
We can't go without due to state requirements, and it might not be like, you have to do this or you're out of compliance, it's, we need this or our children are gonna suffer. So.
Right, and then this, one, the special ed needs as well, I mean, we can't cut too, too, what you're talking, we can't cut those, there's.
Some.
Losses, all kinds of.
So there's like special ed, so one full time special ed teacher, like hypothetically, if we weren't able to hire them, would that lead to out of district tuition? You know, and I know, like, we have many efforts, for, like, in the Berlin Elementary School, we have the, the preschool, so around. Like, yes, those teachers cost money, but how many out of district tuitions?
Yeah, that was our conversation last year, are we planning to move towards more internal, in-house to save that money?
Right, so that's a hundred and five thousand dollars for that special ed teacher at Tohoto we talked about. Would that cause students potentially to have to go out of district if we can't have that person?
There's that potential, it's impossible for me to, you know, to catch an exact number to it. Um, you know, Lisa and I are concerned, a lot of us are concerned about the caseload numbers, um, for the special education teachers, particularly at the high school level.
Right.
Um, at, at Tohoto, so, you know, but, but it's impossible for me to connect, you know, that, right? Form your prediction about out of district placement, but for sure, there's a correlation somewhere.
But that one hundred thousand dollar salary or whatever the exact number is.
Yeah, like one oh five.
Covers more than one student versus out of district, it's one student, two students, three students, whatever, multiples of that.
Correct, one teacher, um, in this, in the public school who is servicing more than one student.
Yeah, so for a hundred grand, we get multiple students covered.
Right.
And we go to.
If all that hundred grand, we're spending three, four, five hundred for.
For example, the, um, the athletic trainer, I'm not talking the director, it's a very different, the trainer, athletic trainer. This is recommended by the MIAA, um, at this point currently, um, it is, is going to evolve into a requirement at some point. But right now, there are not enough of athletic trainers in the state that are certified to do the work, so it cannot be a requirement. So that is something that could be delayed, but that's sixty thousand dollars, it's not, oh, you know, I mean, it's sixty thousand dollars, it's, but it's only sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
But it couldn't e- easily be delayed because it's only the, for football and hockey, that it's required to be co-op with those particular, um, sports. And it's covered through, you know, the co-op, you know, athletic piece, um, so that, that could be offset, um, until it's kind of figured out at the state level.
Thinking of safety over the concussion assessment chapter.
Well, concussion is right. Yeah, the, the concussion is right, yeah. Can I just?
Yeah, I was quickly looking at the numbers, and if you look at page three, that's all the new above level requests, which we know a lot of them are needed.
But if you, I quickly just went through each school, took out the transportation, because we know that's something that can't be changed. So the above level for BMS, and this includes the district wide in these figures, is about two hundred and fifty-seven thousand. The above level for Boylston is about three hundred and twenty thousand, that's no transportation, and the above level for Tohoto is about five hundred and fifteen thousand, with no transportation. So that kind of gives you a ballpark of where you can work with, and then take your apps, you know, whatever you wanna, wherever you wanna go from there, cause you, but that helps you guys a little bit.
So things like the recess aid, um.
What can we start charging people for?
Yeah, that's another thing we talked about.
School supplies.
Donations.
Pay a hundred dollar a year fee for school supplies, and the remainder will go towards funding.
Charge for, charge for buses, I mean, everybody can't charge for transportation.
You can't charge.
Regional.
No, not regional.
Not even high school.
No, what? No.
For regional buses.
They can't charge for transportation.
Even when you live, uh, three hundred yards from the school?
Sports buses.
But you don't have to, that doesn't. Transport, I believe, but you're, don't you, but I want, I believe it's two, within, it's one or two miles, we do not have to transport the kids.
Mm-hmm.
But I can't.
Then maybe we need to look at that and get rid of the bus services.
But I think.
Do a side.
There are districts that.
What about sports buses, like that, if I'm reading the transfer thing correctly, like that doubled?
You're right.
So that is because of the athletic revolves, our funds in athletic revolving drop, we. Last several years, evolving heavily for landscaping fields, and it's, and it's dropping significantly, so we can't use it anymore for the fields. Well, I used half, I took twenty from revolving, and then I added twenty to it, just like.
How many, uh, school choice kids do we need through the district to cover this number? Where, what is, what's that?
By what, five grand a piece?
No, I'm serious.
School choices.
We talked about that last year.
Yeah, but what do we get for school choice, five thousand?
I don't.
And it's significantly dropping.
Dropping.
Well, it will in like the next four years.
Oh, the month we're getting, the month we're getting, yeah.
Yes, yeah. Oh, you're talking, oh.
I'm talking.
We're talking about adding new school choice kids.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you go to page twenty-two, that kind of word gets casted out to next.
We talked about, uh, both in the high school classes up to like a hundred or so, roughly ninety to a hundred graduating, right? They're all like, what, like someone in the eighties right now?
But I think you'd deny it.
At the current pace we're at, by fiscal year twenty-seven, for both elementary schools will have no balance left. And for Tohoto, we'll be down to a hundred and five thousand, we continue to spend five hundred out of school choice for Tohoto, so it's, it's dropping quickly.
But we don't want the space for more school choice, or?
At Boylston, so like, for example, at Boylston Elementary, is there any seats for school choice?
Potentially, depends on which grade, definitely not kindergarten, definitely possibly first, um, third now, not without this other teacher.
Yeah.
There is some potential in there, but the problem is we have two third grade teachers, two fifth grade teachers.
Yeah.
Cannot take it at this point.
Yeah, yeah.
And apartments.
There's not enough room for the desks in the classroom.
A desk, gonna room full of tables follow up, I mean, when I went through the door.
Oh, I'm like, no, those are gone. Go see, soft cleaned out. All right, okay, so, um, all right, I'm, I'm thinking that, I think we gotta wrap this up, because I just, so this is where we're at. So I think next steps, Julie and I, we gotta meet, we gotta get with the towns, Carol, Nancy, we gotta, we gotta get with the towns and we gotta see options. Um, but the other thing we need to do is we need people out there, if you are watching this, you need to come to the public hearing and voice your opinion, because at the end of the day, Laurie, you made the point three or four times. It's what the taxpayers want, so we wanna hear from the parents and the taxpayers. Um, cause at the end of the day, this is just an unbelievably difficult discussion, and to Matt's point, you know, it's not an us versus them situation, we gotta all figure out what can we do? What do we need? And you know, if we have this amount of money, what can we do with this, and if we have this amount of money, what can we do with that? We have to figure it out, the answer can't just be like, we're either cutting ten teachers or we're going for an override, we have to, we have to figure it out. So, um, you know, nothing here is, there's a few things that I think Carol and the administrators looked at that they could possibly cut out. It's nothing major, it's not anywhere close to the eight hundred and fifty thousand we need for Boylston, um.
When we do come back to the next conversation on this, Carol, whatever you do decide to remove, cut, or delay, can you give us an analysis of how that's gonna impact?
Yeah.
Are the plans that we have?
And I, I wanna get more information on like the override process and, you know, if other departments are going for an override, because I feel like other departments in the town might be pushed. And, you know, maybe it's all gonna come to a head, so hopefully, before we meet again, we'll have some more information.
Yeah, I don't wanna just hear like, oh, we cut three, or we delayed three things and it saved X amount, or no. It, it saved X amount and it means that you're not gonna have X, Y, and Z that we wanted to have, or that we needed to have.
Yeah. All right, okay.
It was nice to have page three, to have like price tags attached to them.
Sure.
Our point is, do we have a hundred grand on laptops on every year for every school?
Mm-hmm.
Add that to the.
That's in the cap, we saw, that's in the capital budget.
So that's not.
That's not included, and, well, it's on the capital page, so the towns, free cash.
Add devices to the classroom lists and then do a transfer.
They could use free, if, if we cut our capital down, that's a question.
I mean, I'm sure some kids would like a different type of laptop.
If we cut the capital down to nothing, could we, could some of that cash be used towards operating budget? We've got the bond at Tohoto, we don't.
Is there free?
There's some, but Kristen told us there was like five hundred thousand in Berlin for the schools.
No, we have, um, I'm, if you don't mind me.
Sure, Laurie, Julie.
I don't think that's a problem, I'm also liaison, I just started with capital planning, so I know the rules. But capital planning voted its capital budget using the free cash that we did have back in January, um, because we finally solved your capital needs. We are gonna meet on Thursday at six at the Berlin town offices.
Thursday at six, okay.
At six P M, um, and, one of the things, I, I guess you don't have time, if you have a priority list, out of that capital request, that would be really helpful. Um, because capital planner, we don't have another meeting scheduled after, go on this Thursday, so we have to schedule another one.
All right, so at that meeting, if we could get like an amount that you're able, so they're gonna prioritize, I think they were looking at trimming a few things off that list?
Well, yeah, if you could send that to us.
Yeah.
And then.
Nancy's working on that this week, right, the ca- capital list, yeah.
But then this other thing for the big, big project, at least, the roof, and I may be a bit lost on this, because it's a demo area, it's a big, pretty big.
Mm-hmm.
Kristen has been working with us, and she's been talking about the debt exclusion.
Yeah.
Which, to make sure that that work wasn't missed.
Yeah, and that's the other thing too, that I. Yep, and that's the other thing too that I want to mention to the school committee is that for these capital requests, they can, they talked about, you know, we are gonna need a roof at B E S, so we talked about a debt exclusion for that because that's something that we just can't ignore and we're not gonna get that through, through tax dollars.
I meant to add bond was mentioned?
That's a debt exclusion, yep, yep.
So that's like putting it to future years, right, or like spreading it out over future years?
You pay it off over the years.
What it does is it doesn't, if I understand it correctly, it is a tax, the money for the time it takes to pay off, so the taxpayer are only paying for it for the length of the loan, like whether it's five or ten years, and it doesn't affect your levy deficit.
Exactly.
Correct, that means a temporary lift to the levy, that's the key piece, unlike an override which is permanent. I mean, obviously you could also have an underwriting while you're remaining time to go through that, but, but it's done, it makes like permanent year over year, but with a debt exclusion, you will buy it for like typically like buildings and that stuff you do in twenty years, and as slowly goes down, after twenty years, that's off the books, they're still under being collected, it's done, if you want to build another building or something or whatever it is, you need to go for another debt exclusion. They usually use your process because people know, first of all, like something tangible, because usually they know something they can touch, new roof, new building, and also they do know they go, but it's the other override, they talk your operational expenses, because that's gonna be the big thing, they're going, okay, you need an override for your operational expenses this year, what's gonna constrain you to your operational expenses the next year?
Yeah, that's what you have to plan.
You don't want to go into saying you need operational override every year.
Exactly, exactly.
Because you need to look at where things are, if your, if your plans and expenses are going beyond the growth limits of the town in terms of revenue, you know, you have a very difficult thing and basically have to come ask for very large overrides, which will be then, you know, and then you also fall into your situation, it fails, I mean, where do you, that's why I'm saying you have to come up with a, we have to think somewhere sustainable so that it's not an all or nothing type scenario, because you don't want to go to the town, you know, to a boat and find out you got nothing and now you're back, you know, can you find something in between and sell that property?
And Megan, I just want to confirm that there is no free cash from Berlin for the operating budget?
Not for the operating budget, Kristen said it was just gonna be used for capital.
Just for capital, well, we, I forget the total number, but that was at five.
No, yeah, she told us that you were not using any free cash for operating, yeah, yep, nope, thank you.
The free cash that you're talking about, when capital voted, it's capital budget, it closed June, January, so all the other departments, they voted and I think, is it three hundred? We used between three hundred and four hundred of our revenue.
I thought she said. All right.
The total, the total that was available was around five hundred and we used about three hundred override.
All right, so we'll have to confirm that number with you guys offline.
So Megan, what is, what is gonna happen long-term here, talking about overrides and long-term operational costs, these aren't like fancy wish lists, like let's have the top of the whole school.
Right.
These are necessities because of the growth in the town.
Yeah.
And Berlin's discussing a forty house, roughly forty houses, thirty-five house, housing project on like twenty acres or something, which, you know, we've had these discussions already with Jay and whoever else is there about how many kids that's gonna add, just on top of this. So what is the answer in the future, not just this year, but years ahead?
I don't know, I, I think that if we're gonna do an override, if we are going to do an override, it has to be large enough that it's gonna account for the growth. You're gonna do a one-time override, it has to account for the growth, and yeah, to all their point and what they just mentioned, and I don't want to go too far down this road, if we lose the, and it is hard to pass an override because it's actually on a ballot and who goes to vote on ballots? It might be a different population that's showing up to town meeting, so. Yeah, exactly, exactly, so it could be a hard sell, so, you know, what happens if we put an override out and then we don't get it, then yeah, we absolutely are cutting teachers, that is the reality that we will be living this year.
Well, I'm concerned because electricity has gone up in Boylston.
Yep.
Our taxes have, you know, like the assessments have gone up, which is part of taxes, people are stretched really thin.
I know.
And, and while we have to advocate for the schools, we have to be very aware of the squish that people are in right now.
Yep.
So I totally, it's like, it's just a tough place to be.
Yep.
You guys did a great job with this, though, this document is wonderful, Nancy, and just it's outlined really nicely to very, like Janelle's report too, you can just really understand it, but it is, it's tough to decide.
Yep. All right, so we're gonna leave the budget discussion where it is, we're gonna work with the towns, we're gonna learn some more about override and what that means, we're gonna see if there's any more capacity, we're gonna figure out what the actual free cash is so we can clean up that capital budget, and then we'll be back here in two weeks for the public forum, and we really want to get as many people here as possible. All right, let's bang through these last few votes. Okay, so the budget transfers, did you guys look at the budget transfers? Thank you guys for coming out. Budget transfers from fiscal year twenty-four, by Dan, thank you. Does anyone have any questions on the budget transfers?
What?
Yes, we're just gonna do some votes, so if anyone, principals, assistant principals have to walk, please feel free. Yes, guys, Janelle Sally wants to go for you, Paul. All right, so I'm gonna do these very quickly. All right, guys, does anyone have any questions about these FY twenty-four budget transfers? Nancy put together a spreadsheet, it's been in the drive for a couple of weeks now.
Well, it was, it was in PDF, but then it was in Excel.
Guys, all know the document, happy about? Thank you guys so much, appreciate it.
I just had a question, like, I don't know if it's possible, like, to bring, I don't know if there's any way to bring up payroll in-house?
We do in-house, but they use Harper's as their software, so to calculate payroll would be impossible to do it in-house because they need all the payroll tax laws. So we have, Lisa Crochain does payroll, but they're using the Harper's system, I believe that's how teachers can like put their time off in and.
That's right.
The cost, that's right. Yeah, that's what the cost is, is because they switched to Harper's software.
Yeah. Yeah, we switched to Harper's and it's online now, we, I'm sorry, I didn't get it.
No, she just said would it be possible to bring payroll in-house, I said it is in-house.
That's not what it is, yeah.
Yeah, I said it's software that's used that people can report their time off and that Lisa needs to use because she doesn't all the payroll tax laws in her head.
Yeah.
So, so we're not actually counting.
I had a question about the translator, line item, so it seemed like it was, I don't know, I guess my numbers were a little off, there was line eighty-eight and it seemed to like go from two hundred to fifteen hundred, so I didn't know, you know, like in a state or private, are there any grants to help with that, like I know in healthcare, we do get a certain amount of reimbursement for it, it's not, not enough, but I didn't know, so I'm just thinking it exists.
Good question about the increase in need, not the need, all right, I understand the need because of our, our employment populations, but in terms of like, maybe there's grants from the state, like, because I know healthcare, some of it's reverse, but very little of what should be, but it's required too, so I didn't know.
Yeah, that's a good point, for us, but I am, but I am, I haven't seen anybody.
Do you, do you know upgrades? I've never seen one from transactions.
I haven't seen one for that.
And then I didn't know, like, I mean, if, if it's possible, like I know like there, at least one mom is certified translator for Portuguese in towns, I didn't know if there's any way to use the town resources, like.
Yeah, I remember both ways, Jessica, and I remember we had had individuals who would do something like that, either coming into meetings to translate or translating documents, either way you're gonna pay for that, I think that's, we're looking at the funding source really, I think is what you're talking about, but we either pay that actual translator or the systems that will just translate the material, which is a lot of what they use for newsletters or documents, they need to go home.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, like what we're spending on translation and interpreter services, we're using free resources when they're appropriate, I mean, so the expense represents, we really need something that's professionally done, right, perhaps like confidential documents, special education, a variety of other educational pieces, but for sure, we can keep an eye out and see if we see anything for transition services. No, all right, sorry.
Don't be sorry.
So it seemed like there was a line, a couple line items for BMS, BES, I didn't see Tohonto, but it was for nurse contract services and I didn't know, we have part of a float nurse, so I didn't know it was outside of that or.
Yeah, that doesn't include the float nurse, because the float, the new float nurse is under salaries, but I wasn't sure which line I have, the lines didn't match up.
It didn't.
And I didn't see anything that was contracted, so I was confused with that one.
I had line two sixty.
So did you go off of in the drive where it says fiscal year twenty-five budget by school?
Yes.
And which school was it for two sixty?
Two sixty was BMS.
Oh, yeah, you're right as well. So the contracted services is two sixty-eight and then there's zero, I was just a little. And then, so the six fifty was off too?
I think they all were, I'm sorry.
Different files.
Yeah, no, no, I, yeah. It's fun like talking to, to discuss.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. All right. And after you guys look through this, because please email me, call me with any questions, that's why I'm here, so as you, you know, please don't hesitate.
Let's somehow merge them all in one document, because it doesn't even go up to six hundred, does it?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Google Doc, they're not, just don't.
Looks like so much fun, thank you so much, Nancy. All right. Budget transfers, these are the FY twenty-four budget transfers, can I have a motion to approve the FY twenty-four budget transfers?
So moved.
All right, Lisa, I hear a second.
Second.
Julie, all right, any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm an aye as well, that motion passes. Could I have a motion to approve the Tohonto internship program as presented by Miss Sally tonight? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm an aye as well, that motion passes. I'm gonna skip the next one. Could I have a motion to approve the 2023 school committee annual report, which you all read, thank you all for your feedback, that was wonderful, as it is in the drive? Okay, Julie and Jess, any discussion on that? Thank you for all your chat. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, I'm an aye as well, that motion passes. Could I please have a motion to approve policy DJE dash one, regional school district procurement requirements?
So moved.
Laurie and Julie, all right, any discussion on that one?
Yeah, Lisa.
It just looked like there was some repetitive things in here, like for instance, it says in black font, like the chief purchasing officer may blah, 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 and then it says it again right underneath it in pink, you know, and I guess that was what the MASC.
Yeah, so, so basically what the MASC did is anything that was, that was in black, they wanted to keep, and then anything that's in purple, they wanted you to add, and then anything that's highlighted was added by the, by Carol and Nancy's suggestions.
Yeah, but there's some in pink and black that's the same exact thing, so it's like they wanted to add it, but it was already there.
I think it might be a typo.
Oh.
And maybe what was you saying?
Yeah, where's, where do you see that?
So, okay, so.
Yeah, I think it's.
On the first page.
Right above a procurement for a supply, like towards the bottom, just look at the two. Oh, above that, and I think it's in a couple places actually. Oh, I see. Let me see if the other ones like that. Yeah, and up above a couple more paragraphs, there's the sentence, the contract will be awarded, I think that's twice as well. Really? I know, we'd have to go back and look, because this was, we did the first read in nine twenty-six. Do you want to?
Do you want to throw this back to policy fix?
Yeah, let's do that.
All right, so I made a motion, it's been seconded.
So. Should I?
Yeah.
We can vote against approving it, right?
I think they're just typos that were added twice by mistake.
So we can approve it to fix the typos, the policy, the content of the policy was fine, right?
Yeah.
All right, so how do I amend it, Mike?
Uh, I'll make amendment to accept the policy as in the drive fixing the duplicated language.
Yes.
Yep.
Anybody want to second that?
I'll, oh, someone else.
Okay, Jess.
All right, Jeff. All right, so all in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, so that motion passes, so then we have to vote on, so there was a motion to.
We amended the motion, now vote on the motion.
All right, so now we already seconded that motion, so we have to vote on that original motion. All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I'm an aye as well, so that policy passes. All right, so could I have a motion to approve policy E F E, civil rights complaint policy for child nutrition programs?
So moved.
All right, Laurie? Jess, any discussion on that policy? Was that your policy?
I just have something really picky about it.
Okay.
I just don't know why there's so much bold.
I just say you're, it says you're the owner on it.
Me?
Yeah, it says Lisa Mayer, you modified it.
I didn't, I might have highlighted something and looked at it, but I didn't change it.
Yeah, the bold will be taken.
What's the question, the bold, at the top or the bottom?
At the bottom, you know, where it says note, and then the whole paragraph is bolded, like.
I think, I think that's bolded because it was added in.
Okay.
But you're right, that should not be bolded.
Yeah, and for the second note also.
Yes, both of those would be, the only thing that's usually bolded on them is the, is the top part. Yeah, this is brand new from the, from the MASC, so they're using their, that's what they suggested, but I'm with you, I would take the bold on as well.
I mean, it's just a minor point, but.
Yeah, but it does, it puts your eyes to it.
I'm going to amend the policy to remove the bold, or unbold the bold.
Unbold the bold.
Yeah, anybody second it?
Second.
All right, Laurie, all in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, all in favor of the approving policy E F E with the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, that motion passes, is there anything about I M G A, Lisa? Before we go into that? That one looks.
I was curious, just in terms of like, like if a kid has asthma and allergy to that service, you know, it'll shake out.
Usually they're not, they're hypoallergenic, right? Service docs?
Service docs usually have.
The policy.
One is here, it is.
There's a procedure in there for that.
Oh, they're both.
Yeah. Covers allergies.
See, this one's another new policy by MASC as well.
Wait, which one are we looking at now?
Service animals. Oh. So if somebody has an allergic reaction, they move the animal to a different location designated by building principal.
Or designate an alternative plan will be developed with appropriate district staff. Good question, any other questions on that? Alright, could I have a motion to approve policy I M G A service animals in schools?
So moved.
Alright, Lisa?
Second.
Laurie? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, that motion passes. Alright, you guys have to bear with me, I have to read, so this is, I have to read a statement that we have to vote on. This is to allow Carol to submit this, um, statement of interest to the Massachusetts Building Authority, and it has to be read exactly as so. We're gonna vote and then I need to sign it, cause it's due Friday, right, tomorrow, yeah, sorry, okay. Resolved, having convened, alright, so, um, do I have to say, do I? Alright, I would like to make a motion. Resolved, having convened in an open meeting on February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, prior to the S O I submission closing date, the school committee of Berlin, Boylston Regional School District, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent, this is not the language that I need to read for the vote. No, there's the language I have to read for the motion, this is what I have to sign after we vote. Yeah. Thank you. Yep, that's it. Okay. Maybe I just have to, please use the text below to prepare their prior comments for. Well, it says please prepare the text below. Alright, so I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve our superintendent to submit a statement of interest to the Mass Building Authority with the following wording. Resolved, having convened in an open meeting on February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, prior to the S O I submission closing date, the school committee of Berlin, Boylston Regional School District, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated February twenty twenty-four for the Boylston Elementary School located at two hundred School Street, Boylston, Massachusetts, oh one five oh five, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority category for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. High priority roof replacement as a result of deteriorating conditions that have created major leaks at the school and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Berlin, Boylston Regional School District to filing an application for funding with Massachusetts School Building Authority. Do you need a second? Yeah. Okay, any discussion? Cause my voice is gone.
I didn't, I'm holding in there.
Call in favor.
Aye.
Alright, I'm an aye as well, that motion passes. Alright, this is signed to twenty-seven. So we have our budget hearing. This is the public forum in two weeks from today, five P M in person. We do our final vote on March nineteenth over Zoom. Anything else before I adjourn this meeting? Could I please have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Julie, Laurie, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, thank you so much.